It being seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. A roll call, please.
Mayor Baspus.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Collins. Commissioner Gary.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Talentino.
Here.
Commissioner Twardy.
Here.
Okay, Commissioner Miller.
I move that we excuse Commissioner Collins from the meeting tonight.
Support. And move supported, all those in favor saying aye.
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 Both same side? Thank you. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd ask those if they'd please remove their hats.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice, honor, and all.
Okay, thank you very much. If I'd ask those with cell phones, if you would please put them on vibrate or silence them in other ways, we would appreciate it. Thanks. I'm gonna check my own. And at this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence for the passing of President George H.W. Bush, who passed away this past weekend, our forty-first president of the United States. Thank you. Let's see, item number, we're down to item number, there are no proclamations and recognitions on B, so we're item number C, public comment. Is there, at this time, public comment on scheduled agenda items? At this time, any person may reserve time to speak on an agenda item not to exceed three minutes. I will call from a public comment at the time the agenda item is addressed from the list of individuals that reserved, that reserve time to speak. Other than the public hearing that'll be here tonight, is there anyone else that would like to speak on an agenda item? Okay, I've a couple. If you'd identify yourself for the record, we'd appreciate it.
Uh, I can hear all.
Okay. Okay, that's, uh... What item is that?
E1.
E1, okay. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
What if it's not an agenda item?
A public, public comment at the end of the, um, at the end of the agenda, you'll have time?
Pardon me?
At the public comment time at the end of the agenda, anyone can speak.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Yes, sir. Jane, you're on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay? Yes, ma'am?
Stephanie Sabatini.
Okay. Um...
F6.
And which one?
F6.
Yes?
What name?
F6?
I don't have an idea, so I never got anything.
This one, okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Item D is the consent agenda. Deputy City Manager.
Under consent agenda, one, approval of the city commission meeting minutes of November nineteenth, 2018. Approval of the special city commission meeting minutes of November twenty-sixth, 2018. Item three is acceptance of the local development finance authority meeting minutes of October eighteenth. Item four, acceptance of the Sioux-St. Marie Housing Commission meeting minutes of September twentieth and October eighteenth. Item five, authorize the purchase of generic time from the Michigan Municipal Employees Retirement System by Tracy Leighton. Item six, approval of updated boards and commission liaison list. Item seven, authorization to solicit promotions, agent interest on an open basis. Item eight, authorization for city administration to send a letter to the Bureau of Indian Affairs expressing support for the trust application filed by the Sioux-St. Marie Tribe of Chippewa Indians. Item nine, authorization of an ambulance service agreement update with Sioux Township. Item ten, authorization of an ambulance service agreement update with Bruce Township. Item eleven is from the Downtown Development Authority, addition of quarterly and monthly rates for super permit sales. Item twelve, from the Downtown Development Authority, addition to the fee schedule for discounted parking permits to incentivize rental rehabilitation. Item thirteen, from the Downtown Development Authority, renewal of parking enforcement software contract with Compulis Data Innovations, and the DDA director had requested that that item be removed from this evening's agenda, and it will be coming before the commission at a later date.
Okay.
Item fourteen is from the Sioux-St. Marie Area Public Schools, request for city to collect the 2019 summer property taxes for the Sioux area public schools. And item fifteen is approval of the consent agenda items as presented.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone has questions of the consent agenda, less the item thirteen which was pulled at this time? If not, would Commissioner Twardy, would you motion?
I so moved that we approve the consent agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Baspus.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item E, special orders of business, one, authorization for the mayor and the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to transfer the land known as the Methodist Mission Reserve from the ownership of the city to the ownership of Sioux Tribe of Chippewa Indians.
Okay, thank you very much. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As Commissioners are aware, the Sioux-St. Marie Tribe of Chippewa Indians and the city, a Sioux-St. Marie Liaison Committee has been meeting with regularity in order to discuss matters of mutual interest and to explore areas through which collaboration and cooperation can be maximized for the benefit of the entire community. In recent meetings, the members of the Liaison Committee have identified an interest that the Sioux Tribe maintains in acquiring property currently owned by the city of Sioux-St. Marie. Specifically, this property encompasses a large portion of the Methodist Mission Reserve and is of very significant cultural value to the Sioux Tribe. Attachments prepared by the Sioux Tribe which detail each of the two parcels of interest have been included. To more thoroughly discuss this matter, the city commission held a special work session along with Chairperson Erin Paymont and Unit One Directors Hoffman, McCurty, and Gravel on November twenty-sixth. During the work session, tribal representation discussed the importance of obtaining ownership of the property in question due to its significant value. As it already abuts trust land among most of the western boundary, obtaining it would provide for a significant expansion of reservation land within the city. Further, the vast majority of the land would remain as is due to the value placed upon the preservation of historically forested areas. Modifications were discussed, however, they were largely limited to the construction of trails as well as the possibility of constructing additional housing just west of the existing housing south of the Big Bear. City administration has confirmed presence of wetlands mitigation easements which were placed upon the properties in order to facilitate commercial developments by Meyer and Walmart. As determined by Community Development Director Freeman, these easement areas represent a significant percentage of the area available for possible wetland mitigation with little remaining to facilitate future development. Presently, the Community Development Department is tasked with assuring compliance by the city with MDEQ provisions of applicable easement restrictions at this site. In researching the matter further, administration and the Sioux Tribe have confirmed with the Attorney General's Office that the Sioux Tribe would be able to assume responsibility for complying with applicable easement restrictions if it were to become the owner of these parcels. This could be accomplished through Sioux Tribe's completion of a partial waiver of sovereign immunity as pertaining to the parcels and easements. At the November twenty-sixth work session, Chairperson Paymont indicated, and the Unit One Board members indicated, the tribe would be willing to complete such a waiver or remove the easement lands from a future application for trust status if necessary. Other technical concerns yet to be addressed include the assignment of the endowment fund held at the Chippewa County Community Foundation for easement compliance, from which the city cannot draw revenues otherwise, and the assignment of the easement agreement with Meyer to the Sioux Tribe. Neither issue is currently expected to be an obstacle to this effort. It would also be important to examine the need for any easements the city may need to retain over the property for infrastructure. For example, there's a water main running along the northern portion of the parcels. The city would not experience, would not experience an economic loss through the transference of the parcels and may be relieved of the administrative burden of assuring ongoing compliance with easement restrictions. Finally, it should be noted that the final boundaries of the transference would be confirmed prior to the execution of any related paperwork if this progresses. Accordingly, it would be my recommendation that the city commission authorize the mayor and city manager to sign documents necessary to effectuate the transfer of the property known as the Methodist Mission Reserve from the ownership of the city of Sioux-St. Marie to the ownership of the Sioux Tribe of Chippewa Indians. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I believe we have the Sioux Tribe representatives, DJ Hoffman, board members, and Mike. Yeah. Go ahead.
Charles Mattson.
Oh, okay. Go ahead. If you want to introduce the crew with you, go ahead.
I will. My name is DJ Hoffman, I'm the vice chair of the Sioux Tribe of Chippewa Indians, Michael McCurty, Unit One Director, and Charles Mattson, Unit Five Director. I was asked to read from a letter that you all have from the Chairperson. Dear Mayor Baspus and Honorable City Commissioners, it is with great respect that I submit this letter of appreciation for the elected city leaders to consider returning, I'm sorry, transferring a portion of my tribe's traditional homelands behind the old Methodist Mission East of Shunk and extending to the former Riverside Trailer Park. It is through long-term mutual cooperation that we are able to arrive at this monumental act of good faith in this donation of land. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and esteemed city commission, for considering this donation of land. I pledge to ensure all conservation restrictions be honored and mitigated prior to submitting this land for federal Indian trust status. Respectably, Erin Paymont, Chairperson.
Could you speak to a little bit about what the property just really means to the Sioux Tribe?
That property was property that has historically been a part of the tribe as others. To me personally, that was my backyard on the rez. We call that Phase Two over behind Salt here, all the way over to JK Way. Now, it would be, to most who've been to our powwows, it is the southeast portion that basically comes almost to Riverside but runs to Gardenville Road, which I still call Ridge, and butts up to other land that is on Three Mile. Historically, we have used it, albeit we thought it was ours, lots of us, for gathering, harvesting. We used it for trails, and that is something that we have looked at for extending our trail over Big Bear so that we can have a much bigger trail system, not only for our community but for the tribe, for the entire community. As we've said in our meetings, you know, we are all part of this community as well. So, the better that we do, the better that this community does, and vice versa.
Sure, and it was, it was DJ that brought this, to the attention of the commission, and we feel, and you felt it was very appropriate at the three-hundred-fiftieth anniversary of the city that this, this could be done. It's land that we have the conservation easements on, it takes a certain amount of administrative time to, to continue annually to monitor, and you would take over that responsibility for us, or actually, it is a win-win for, for both entities. So, we do appreciate that cooperative, and we certainly appreciate the cooperative effort that we've had over many years with the, with the Board of Directors and the, certainly the members of the Sioux Tribe of Chippewa Indians.
Any questions other than those?
Okay, questions of DJ, anyone?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioner Baker?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor and the city manager to sign documents necessary to effectuate the transfer of the property known as the Methodist Mission Reserve from the ownership of the city of Sioux-St. Marie to the ownership of the Sioux Tribe of Chippewa Indians.
Support.
It's been moved, supported. Are there any further questions? Comments? Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes, motion carried.
Item two, under special orders of business, is public hearing of necessity, construction of sanitary sewer on Hyde Street between West Sixth Avenue and West Eighth Avenue.
Okay, thank you. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. On this matter, City Engineer Bassista will present to the commission and community.
Okay, thank you. Evening, Linda.
So, at the last meeting, you passed a resolution setting this, the public hearing of necessity for a public improvement, which would be a sanitary sewer extending south from Sixth Street on Hyde to Eighth Street. City, city ordinances currently say that property owners who are in proximity to a public sewer must connect, and any buildings that, houses, dwelling units, buildings, are required to be connected either to a public sewer or, in the case that public sewer is not available, to have a private sewage disposal system which would be permitted by the Chippewa County Health Department. Again, the project, proposed project area is Hyde Street between Sixth and Eighth Street. So, the map up on the screen right now is, shows Sixth Avenue at the top, and that's where we currently have sanitary sewer. There are two properties, and the area of interest is the Sixth Avenue and Eighth Avenue to the south. Currently, there are two properties, two buildings, one single-family residential dwelling connected by a long service lead that extends down Hyde to the sewer on Sixth Avenue, and then Superior Health Support Systems recently built a, an assisted health home, and that's also connected by a long lead from their current building to West Sixth Avenue. The city's long-time policy has been that these long service leads where there's not a public sewer and it also pertains to water, if there is not a main available, then up to two, two units may be connected to a sewer or water main that extends down right-of-way to, to an adjacent sewer where there is a sewer or water main available. Those long leads are put in via a private use agreement that comes before the city commission to approve the use of the right-of-way for a private lead, and all those, all those agreements always say that should a sewer or water become available, that property owner would connect to the sewer or water and participate in the cost of the installation of the sewer or water. So, there's, we already have two connections, and starting at the north, the proposed lots to be included in, in the special assessment for sanitary sewer would be this parcel that is, belongs to Cooks who own currently are, it's adjacent to their, it's a separate parcel but it's adjacent to the, a dwelling that they own on West Sixth Avenue. The second one on the other side of the street is, belongs to Superior Health Systems, which is, is proposed that, through discussions with Tracy Holt, has indicated that they have plans in one to two years to build a training building on that site, in which case they would need connection to a sanitary sewer for that facility. The other two are the existing dwellings that I mentioned before, and then to the south is Smith, this is a vacant lot, vacant parcel consisting of about four lots. And then there's another proposed connection for Superior Health Support Systems who plan to in three to five years build another assisted home, residential home. The impetus for the sewer now, which, the impetus for the sewer in the future would be Superior Health Support Systems wanting to build additional facilities, but the impetus now is two properties owned by Larry Bitner, there's current houses on those properties which are not sufficient, do not have sufficient septic field capacity for even the size of the homes currently. I've received the records from the Health Department that indicated the, the septic fields are insufficient for the size of the homes now, and Mr. Bitner's plans are to add on to each of those homes, add another bedroom, which would require even larger septic systems, which is not, it's not possible for him to expand those septic systems. So, that is the impetus for the sewer now, and so the proposal is to construct the sewer, an eight-inch sewer from West Sixth Avenue to Eighth Avenue. The cost estimate for the project, in addition to constructing the sewer, and this is a gravel road, would be to also, as part of the project, do a gravel road grade lift on this portion of Hyde Street. It is a project that we've had in our capital improvement plan for a few years but hasn't really risen to the, to a top priority project. However, if there is some construction proposed for Hyde Street, would propose that we do a gravel road grade lift at the time to improve the drainage on that street and raise the road up a little bit so that we can improve the drainage. So, the total project cost with the grade lift is, is estimated at one-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-seven-hundred. The portion of the project that would be attributed to the sewer is a hundred thousand. So, in doing a special assessment, it's required that you identify the benefits associated with the public improvement, and as I mentioned before, the, the benefits would be eight property, eight potential connections or eight benefits to the properties that are built or have buildable lots on fronting Hyde Street, and that don't, do not currently front West Sixth Avenue. And then two, by Larry Bitner, he would not be by definition part of the special assessment district by being part of Hyde, fronting Hyde Street, but however, since he is asking is in need of the sewer, he would be part of the special assessment as an equal participant with, with two connections based on his need, need for the sewer. So, with the total cost of the project for the sewer being a hundred thousand dollars, and that is an estimate, one, the process for doing these types of projects where it's a hundred percent special assessment for the public improvement is that the roll hearing is set after bids are received and the actual price is known, but divided by eight benefits, then it's, the cost would be twelve thousand five hundred per benefit. This would also be, as proposed in the resolution, that it could be payable in installments over twenty years. And as I mentioned, this is a, as I mentioned, Larry Bitner's properties are the ones that are the need, the immediate need for the sewer, but if postponed to a future year, Larry Bitner's properties would be taken out of the special assessment district, which, in which case then there would be total, six total built or buildable lots fronting Hyde, and the special assessment, the total cost would be divided by six properties instead of eight, in which case the price would go down only slightly because there would be less cost for connecting Bitner's two properties. So, the estimated total sewer project cost would be ninety-nine thousand six hundred divided by six properties in the special assessment district. Each parcel would, each, each property owner would be paying sixteen thousand six hundred for, per connection. So, the process, again, is, as proposed, is tonight, you already passed two resolutions to get to this point, so tonight you'd be holding the hearing of necessity to hear from the property owners, the benefiting property owners, and should you then choose to proceed with the project, you'd pass a resolution ordering the public improvement and setting the number of years for the installment payments, which is proposed to be twenty, twenty years, and also approve the budget for the project. My department would then finish the, complete the design for the project, put it out for bids, and in March, we would prepare, know the actual costs, prepare the assessment roll, and bring it to, on April meeting where city commission would then hold, or then schedule the roll hearing and conduct a hearing for the roll and award the construction contract. We would then be able to proceed with construction in May or whenever the frost is out of the ground, and probably be complete in July. And then, special assessment bills are sent to property owners, the, the, the spring following the completion of a project, so in this case, it would be completed in 2019, bills would be sent to property owners in the spring of 2020. First installment or full payment, to avoid future interest, would be due October first, So, if you, unless you have any questions, it would be appropriate for you to hold the public hearing.
You have questions of Linda? Okay. Commissioner Twardy?
Thank you. Can you go back to the total cost of the project, the breakdown? Please.
Mm-hmm.
So, let's just say that we were going to not do the street improvements at this time and improve the drainage. Would that impact the project very much? I can't really see.
The total, the, the savings for, for doing the grade lift along with the sanitary sewer is the mobilize, a share of the mobilization, so seventy-five hundred would be added, put in, added to the sewer column, and a thousand dollars for contractor staking. It's the items that say fifty percent, so mobilization, contractor staking, and erosion control, and minor traffic control. Those are all shared fifty-fifty in, in the estimate with the grade lift, and then the other items would be sewer. So, fifteen hundred, twenty-five hundred, about ten thousand more. So, another thousand, thirteen hundred, fourteen hundred per connection. Would be, it would be more for the sewer cost if we weren't doing the grade lift.
They're not, they're not, the residents are not participating in the grade lift?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
But the cost of the sewer project goes down because of the grade lift.
Okay, okay. I was confused about that. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions of our city engineer? City Manager?
Nothing further. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. At this time, Commissioner Gary, you have a question?
They're all on water, correct? So, they're, everything will be metered.
Correct, there's water there, yes.
And what's the approximate cost per year if they ran it out for twenty years? Six hundred and some dollars, is that what it is?
Yeah, I didn't do the calculation, but with the interest.
Is it, do we have projects that go twenty-five years?
We could go, we could go more years. The, the key is not going beyond the useful life of the, and sewers have really technically a useful life of fifty years, but also the special assessment, the, the funds to pay for the sewer upfront, it will be coming out of the sewer depreciation fund, and the special assessment will be paying it back. So, the longer we take to pay it back, the less those funds are available for other sewer wastewater projects.
Okay, good. And instead of the commission having questions, let's, let's go to the public comment at this point. So, at this time, thank you. At this time, we'll hold the public hearing of necessity to construct the sanitary sewer on Hyde Street between West Sixth Avenue and West Eighth Avenue. Is there anyone that'd like to make comments on this project? Yes, ma'am. If you would come up to the microphone, this is so that the, we're also on TV, so this is for the, the folks listening at home.
Okay.
If you'd pull the mic up to your, and you don't have to get real close to it, but, great, thank you. And if you identify yourself for the record.
I'm Barbara Cook, and I'm one of the owners of the lot that's behind Sixth Avenue, and it's an undidalved lot.
Can we have a picture up there?
It's assessed at fifteen hundred dollars, and I really don't want to put twelve thousand five hundred dollars into something that's never going to be built on, because it's mine right now and then it's going to my daughter.
Ms. Cook?
And I really need to know what the interest is on twenty years. I mean, whoever has. I, I mean, whoever had that or whoever was talking about it, that's, that's an important factor. And I guess that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Megan Smith, I'm a property owner of Hyde. I actually brought down the original city, the water and sewer down when I built.
Did you identify yourself?
Megan Smith.
Megan Smith, thank you.
I'm a property owner of Hyde Street. I actually paid to bring down the city water and sewer to my home when I put it in 2008. I actually paid to bring the city sewer down here. I paid for this once. I'm not going to pay for it again for someone else who's not even going to have to participate in this special assessment.
Okay.
Okay. So, I've paid for this once. I deal with the road, I deal with the flooding, I'll deal with those issues. And just by grading that and upgrading it, it's not going to fix that issue.
Now, if you paid for a sewer, there is no sewer.
Sewer and the water. I originally paid that. I built seventeen oh two Hyde. Okay. I brought that sewer and the water service down to my home when I put it in 2008. Superior Health connected into that that I already paid to bring down.
Okay.
And now, they want to connect to it, and they're not going to be part of this assessment. Okay? Correct, correct me if I'm wrong. That's what I heard today.
City manager?
This is correct.
Let's answer them now.
Right. On that particular property question, I would defer to the city engineer and.
She, don't go away. Yeah, let's, let's leave the picture up there, too, if we could.
Okay. So, Megan's house is here, and as, as I mentioned, she, she did run her service, her sanitary sewer lead from Sixth Avenue down to her property. There is currently water main on Hyde Street, so it, there is a public water main on Hyde. Superior Health Systems did the same thing that Megan did, and that is take a long service lead for their sanitary sewer and connect it to the sewer on West Sixth Avenue. Those are private leads that go to Sixth Avenue. And that's where I'm talking about, we, we do, will allow two of those before a public main needs to be built on Hyde Street. And Superior Health Systems is part of this special assessment. They actually have, would have three. So, their total special assessment is thirty-seven thousand, five hundred. They, they have two, two parcels, tax parcels, but three benefits because of their current and future connections being buildable lots fronting Hyde Street. So, their total assessment at three times twelve thousand, five hundred is thirty-seven thousand, five hundred. Larry Bittner would have two, so his total special assessment would be twenty-five thousand. Cooks, Megan, and Don and Jean Smith would each have a special assessment of twelve thousand, five hundred. Did I answer?
No.
So, you originally, that he wouldn't be part of that assessment? So, when he's.
No. What I said was if, in the future, if this sewer is not built now and, and he goes ahead and fixes his current septic field, in the future, say, when Superior Health Systems wants to build those other facilities on Hyde, Larry Bittner would not be in the special assessment district. We would, he would be excluded because he's not, by definition, fronting the sewer, even though we're make, we would make it available to him and he would be in the special assessment. So, the sewer would run down West Sixth Avenue and stop and only serve the Superior Health Systems here at the south end and the, it would be able to serve the vacant lot also here. So, you would be connected into the sewer at the time of the construction instead of having the long lead. And she, it's correct, she built that long service lead and tapped into the sewer at, in, in West Sixth Avenue, but that was part of the agreement for a private use agreement to be able to do that and have sewer without having to build the sewer by herself, being the first person to need sewer on Hyde Street.
Got, um, well, you have questions of the, we wait until the public hearing is done and then we'll have, okay? Okay. That's just, okay? So, just so we can understand, the private sewer leads, she and other, and the other folks that have that, too, the Superior Health, they paid for their own system to connect their, their lines to the, or their run to the sewer that we have on the other street.
Correct. They.
What did that cost them?
But it's, it's a long, it's just a long service lead.
Right.
And.
There's still a cost.
Yeah. They, they had to pay, just like anybody else paying from their house to the main.
And that's just a little longer for them.
It's just that it's longer because they had to go down the right-of-way where there was not a sewer and connect to sewer.
What, what did you pay for that?
Fourteen thousand, but I don't, some of it was sewer and some of it was water.
Okay. So, it was in, in this total for the water?
Service.
For both, like, okay.
Down in the middle with cleanouts every fifty, seventy-five feet.
Sure.
Break down the middle of Hyde.
Okay.
So, why can't he connect right across at West Eighth on top of the hill?
This is a public hearing, so is that the mic and when you're asking those questions? So, if you'd like to come back up and finish the discussion, then, then we'll let you. But then, it's, you can't come run back and forth, okay? So, get, get your questions out now and then we can talk about it.
Okay. So, my question would be, why extend another four hundred and sixty-three feet or three hundred and eighty-three feet? Is that correct?
Six hundred.
Okay. Six hundred and some feet. There's already existing water and sewer at West Eighth on top of the hill that he is adjacent to. Why would they not go through there instead of running it six hundred feet?
That's a good question. Do you have any other, do you have any other comments?
Not right now.
Okay. Okay. Public comments always at the end of the meeting, so, okay. And we can ask you that after the public hearing, okay? On, as the commissioners, they can, we'll have our time, okay? Anyone else? Okay. If you identify yourself, Don.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioner.
Evening.
Donald Smith. I have vacant property on this street, vacant, vacant. I'm not going to build. It's for sale. Why do I have to pay twelve thousand, five hundred dollars? It's vacant property, number one. What I paid for that, this is three times what I paid for it. Vacant lots. And are all of the assessments the same? Twelve thousand, five hundred. Bittner, everybody, are they all the same?
Yes.
Are they all the same? Mr. Bittner has two, and we're doing it for him, aren't we? Oh, that's not fair. That's not fair.
It may, it may have happened later anyway, and she's saying, you know, you have eight people that would like to pay for it versus, not, not would like, but eight people could pay for it versus six because he wouldn't be included if it wasn't done now, okay?
Okay. Now, you, you didn't answer her question, a very important one. Why aren't they hooking in the Eighth Avenue sewer?
We're going to ask that.
Why are you not hooking into that, Mrs. Engineer? Have you ever thought of it? Why don't you do it?
Yeah. Wait, um, Don?
Okay. That's all I need.
They will answer.
Vacant lots. I don't want to spend any money, and before I get legal representative, I'm going to find out if I have to hook into that stupid sewer.
Understand.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Oh, that's, sure, Jean.
Jean Smith? If you know that your lots are never going to be sold, say, it's an orchard or working towards that. I guess there's a term or a classification that you.
Would use?
You, you call them. Then they're taken, are they taken and classified differently or taxed differently?
Okay. I understand that they would never be sold.
I'm asking.
Okay.
I don't know.
Well, our city manager can answer that.
Right. So, it would be, it would be assessed based on the value of the property, and then if a house were constructed, then that kind of a lot.
There would be no houses.
It would just be the value of the property in that instance, the land value.
So, then would I still be assessed at that rate of twelve thousand, five hundred or whatever is, it, it comes to?
Uh, yes, ma'am, under that scenario, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment? Okay. Well, we'll close the public hearing. City manager?
And I know the city engineer will address the possible discussion about tying in at West Eighth. But to get back to the special assessment interest rate, it's one percent on top of the prime rate as of the, the date that the role is confirmed by the city commission. So, not to exceed six percent would be the interest rate.
Okay. City engineer? I guess the question, the commission, and then we'll go to the commission, why isn't he using, Mr. Bittner, using the, the sewer available on top of the hill?
The sewer on top of the hill, he does not have direct access to. He does not front that right-of-way, and so, therefore, he would require, it would require he obtain a private easement through private property in order to access the sewer.
Okay. City commissioner, let's go to Commissioner Gary.
Linda, you had mentioned something about because there were two hookups, any of the, the subsequent hookups would require sewer system. What, what is the law on that, I guess, if Superior Health Systems then wants to hook up another, um, property?
Our ordinance requires that each individual building have its own connection to the sewer main. That's per ordinance. So, Superior Health, if they build another building that is not connected to their, to one of their other buildings, would have to tie into public sewer.
Commissioner Twardy?
So, it seems to me like Ms. Megan Smith spent all that money trying to send, bring down her private sewer and water. I mean, she and then the other one at Superior Health Systems, they don't get any sort of credit for that? I mean.
No. That's part of the agreement when we allow someone to connect to a sewer that is not fronting adjacent to their property. That's why we give them a private use agreement, and part of that agreement is that instead of building a septic field, because they'd have to build one or the other, either build a private septic field in order to get a building permit or connect to the sewer, the choice was to connect to, by long lead to the sewer and then therefore participate, as part of the agreement, to participate in the future cost of bringing the main down to serve that property.
Commissioner Baker?
Two questions. One, the special assessment, assessment on Bittner's property, he's twenty-four?
Twenty-five thousand, because he has two.
Twenty-five thousand.
Twelve thousand, five hundred each.
So, what would it cost him to tap into Eighth Avenue?
I don't know because he would have to get an easement through private property to do that, and so that would be.
Would it, would it be safe to say that it would be around the same amount Ms., Mrs. Smith paid, around fourteen thousand?
Potentially. Depends on how much restoration, if they have to go, if he has to go through a driveway, a paved driveway, through landscaping. I know that Smith's is one of the properties that it potentially could go through. I, I don't know what discussions they've, they had, but I know they have a beautifully landscaped property, so I don't, I don't know. I don't know the particulars to any of the discussions that they had any.
And then, as far as Superior Health with the potential building, is that, is that confirmed? Are they for sure going to be building? Or is this just, you know, maybe, maybe they will, maybe they won't kind of a thing?
I'm only going by what Tracy told me on the phone, and she said one to two years for the training building and three to five years because they have some other priorities in St. Ignace area or Pickford that they're wanting to build a house, an assisted house like the one they built here before the next one here. So, the next one would be three to five years.
Question or comment?
To the city commission and to the city manager, could we table this and have Mr. Bittner get a price on what it would cost for him to tap into Eighth to see if it's, because if it's four, it's still going to be cheaper for him to do it that way versus paying the twenty, twenty-five thousand anyway, if it's around fourteen thousand, depending on the situation, to see what the price would be on that and kind of go from there?
It's, any, I guess, anything is, is possible, the votes, but I think let's have some discussion maybe before we get to that point. As a, as a commissioner, this is a commission's time to, to speak to the question, okay? So, commission, I have a couple of comments. You know, everything was going very well in, in those neighborhoods, and I've been in those neighborhoods over the years occasionally, and they're rural. It's, you know, it's, it's country living, so to speak, and I'm sure that the Smiths, when they bought the property, it was vacant property, they built a nice home, paying the fourteen thousand dollars to get your sewer and water going to a different, and then Superior Health moves in, who does a tremendous community goodwill in the community. The money they raise is coming from other people, and people are willing to give to the organizations to have the services that they provide. When a private property owner has to come up with those monies, it's coming out of their pocket. So, it's, so it's just a little bit different. I feel that, and that's what we struggle with Lake Shore. At the time, we had ninety percent years, years ago, before I was on the commission, grants to help with that. We don't have any grants now for sewers. So, that it falls on the property owners. When you have only a few property owners, it gets to be a burden that sometimes they can't take care of. So, I, I think sometimes it's unreasonable, especially when you've, when people are living in the properties they're living in and have spent the monies that they've spent, and their, and their systems are very good, to all of a sudden disregard those systems because an individual property owner, in, in this case, isn't, isn't part of the district, needs a, needs a service, and it's in the city. It's, it's going to be a tough question. At this point, I, I, I think, you know, whether we ever have sewer in that area, and if the property owners, primary, a lot of, majority of property owners don't want the sewer and don't want to pay for it because they have properties that are fine and are able to be lived on, and they have, if you've, if you've seen the Smith's property, you know that it's very well taken care of and it's, uh, they've had their awards over the years for the flower gardens and stuff that they maintain. So, they're, they're responsible property owners. And, and Superior Health Systems does an excellent job in the community. So, it's a tough question, but ultimately, we're talking about monies that people have to go to borrow in order to pay for, for that thing. And if it's not thirty years, where it gets to be a lesser amount of money, the lots don't sell up there for, the lots in the city, many of them don't sell for the kind of money that you're going to put a sewer system in for. Yet, we wish they would. I mean, eventually, housing is going to get stronger, hopefully, in, in our area, and people will be able to afford those kind, majority of people. So, those, those are the kind of things that we wrestle with. But ultimately, where this goes, I think I know where I'm going, but one vote, so. Commissioner Gary?
I guess I have another question for the city engineer. In your text, it says the health department has reluctantly and with warning provided permits for septic systems for these two properties in the past, only because public sewer was available. So, that was for Mr. Bittner's properties. What would happen with the rest of the properties if they had a failure of their septic? I'm assuming a, a permit would not be issued then in that case? Or? in that case, or the cost would far exceed this cost?
I, I think the cost would probably far exceed what a normal septic field is, because he'd have to go to extraordinary lengths to provide adequate septic treatment.
And I'm assuming Mrs. Cook and the Smith's lots that they're talking about are, they're just owned residential, is that what they are, they're not agricultural?
That's correct, residential.
And I know it's not a lot of consolation, but the, having a sewer hookup does increase the value of the property, but the marketability of it as well, but I know it's, this is a big pill to swallow, how far could we go on the assessment as far as if they needed the affordability for, how long would the useful life be, we could go up to?
Fifty years.
Commissioner Twardy.
Tending to lean a little bit towards your comments, I think it's really difficult, especially for Mrs. Cook, who has no intention on putting any sort of a building on there, and, and also with Mr. Smith, and then also planning on gifting it to her daughter, you know, putting 12,500 into a piece of property that only would sell for 1,500, I mean, I don't know if you, I guess you could tack the bill onto the potential purchaser, but I don't really see, I don't see Mr. Bittner sitting in the audience, I really would have liked to have seen Mr. Bittner come and talk, and I don't really, I don't see anybody from Superior Health Systems, and they do, they deal with a different pot of money, and I think it's, this is, and I understand your goal, I appreciate all of the work that city engineer did, and I get the goal that it's a focus on organization-wide implementation of the citizen service philosophy, however, this is rural living within city limits, and I just think that's a, that's a lot of money to ask these property owners to, to pay for when they've not been bothered up to this point until somebody outside of the service district needed something, so I'm kind of leaning a little bit towards where you're going.
Commissioner Valentino.
Lynda, I got a couple of quick questions for you, please. Hypothetically, if Superior Health Systems in the future decides to do what they need to do, could they do the same thing that Mrs. Smith did, is run it down 12th and pay for that all themselves that way, would that work?
We only allow two connections.
And that would be three?
And that would be the third, which would trigger the construction of the sewer.
Okay, and then also you made a comment regarding if Mr. Bittner decides to try to go off the Eighth Avenue, he would partially have to go off of Mr. and Mrs. Smith's property?
Either Smith's or their, their neighbor. We've checked the feasibility, we've checked the feasibility for both a while ago.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Gary.
I guess to Commissioner Valentino, so if Superior Health System wants to build, we have to have a hookup for them?
Yes.
I don't see them here, if they want to build it, I'd like to have the commitment of what they want to build, I mean, we need more information, so maybe a tabling motion or something to that effect, we'd send it back and, and get some, because I don't, well, where it's going, I have no idea.
But otherwise, if somebody else's system fails, what happens?
I...
Don't know.
I don't know, the house, the current houses would be uninhabitable and condemned.
Any other comments? Okay, Commissioner Miller.
Are there any property owners here from that area that agree with it?
What was the question again?
Well, it's not, it's not a question.
It wasn't a question, it was a comment, I'm looking for any property owners that, from that area that agree with it.
Well, I'm from the area and I don't agree with it, I'll give you permission on Eighth Avenue to go over there and hook up there.
Mr. Smith, please, okay, I understand your concern, thank you, okay, okay, we need a motion, yays or nays, it's, Commissioner Miller, you'd like to make a motion, or Commissioner Baker, you'd like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, Your Honor.
Okay.
I move that we do not approve the budget of 157,700 dollars as presented for this project.
It's your support.
I'll support that.
Okay, it's move support, now we have some discussion, any discussion, other than, everybody understand the motion? Commissioner Gary.
Procedurally, I guess instead of denying it, what would happen if we made a tabling motion, Mr. City Attorney?
There would be no discussion, go ahead, City Attorney.
There is a motion on the floor that's been supported, if a tabling motion is made and seconded, it has priority, ends the discussion and must be voted on.
I make a motion that we table, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we table this item, refer it back to city administration for further review.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved support, and I said there's no, no discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
No.
Commissioner Valentino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Basfus?
No.
Commissioner Baker?
No.
Three to two, three to three, 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 it's, I like three, two better.
Motion is defeated.
Okay, Commissioner Miller.
Since it's defeated, then we act on my motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
You checked, yes.
Oh, better move first.
Thank you, sorry.
Any other discussion on Commissioner Miller's motion, that was seconded by Commissioner Twardy? On the, denying the, um, construction of sanitary sewer on hide between West Sixth Avenue and West Eighth Avenue, Commissioner Valentino.
Well, I guess if they're willing to give access to Mr. Bittner.
Absolutely, yes.
Yes, that was my question, and, and that might...
Mr. Miller, Mr. Bittner can do his legwork for him, I mean...
Correct, correct, I fully understand, I guess this is going to have to be revisited, no matter how we look at it, if it's not now, it's going to be two, it's going to be three years from now, and I, I think all's we're doing is just kind of kicking the can, we're putting a Band-Aid over a bleeding artery, so this is going to come back, okay, that I do see in the future because of what the health systems want to use, so I just want everyone out there to, to understand that this issue is going to return, okay? Everybody understand? Thank you.
Are you talking with us now? Okay, Commissioner Miller.
And when it's revisited, it probably won't include Mr. Bittner, right?
No.
So, so you should know that, it'll be more money for you when it's revisited.
Okay, okay, any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Valentino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Basfus?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
No.
Motion carried, thank you. Okay, next item.
Item F, Communications, one from Commissioner Gary, discussion on rationale behind the decision to opt out of marijuana.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gary.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I have a few pages of notes, so just kick me if I get too long. We in Sioux-St. Marie have a city commissioner and manager style of government, and voters elect the legislative body of the city, and as a group, we're responsible for taxation, appropriation ordinances, and general functions to promote the well-being of the city, and it's important to remember that this authority is granted to the commission as a whole, and not any individual members of the commission. Last meeting, November 19th, we approved an ordinance prohibiting marijuana establishments, and although I've had some pretty positive responses from the public, I've also seen some pretty negative responses, mostly in social media, so I wanted to address those. City manager, I think, at the last meeting outlined the act very thoroughly, and we had a lot of very good discussion, I've watched the video a couple of times, having lived through the meeting as well, and I wanted to clarify why the ordinance, in the eyes of the entire commission, by virtue of a majority vote, is in the best interest of the well-being of the city and our residents. My comments tonight, and I think our decision to opt out, were not based on opinion or judgment on marijuana use or the stigma of marijuana, it was based on fact and where we are as a community and where this legislation or this act is. I did include 13 different attachments in our city commission agenda packet, hopefully people had a chance to look at it, it included the act itself, the Michigan Municipal League's interpretation or training that they gave us on the act, and then a lot of different articles that have come out since, on, mostly on communities that have opted out, which seems to be the predominant way of handling it at this point in time, and we realize and we know that the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act passed, and it does go into effect on December 6th, and we know that in Michigan, it was passed by a 56-44 margin, we know that in our county, it was a 52-48 margin, and in the city of Sioux-St. Marie, it was 56-44. Also understand that nationally, the support for medical marijuana is 62%, 74% with millennials, 63% with Gen Xers, 54% with baby boomers, and 39% with the silent, whoever they are. The personal possession will now be legal, and the act that was passed gives the most generous amounts in the United States of America, so I don't think anybody is going to be slighted. The act is a grueling nine pages long in really small print, it's very doubtful that many people understood exactly what it contained, and we did read it before we discussed it at the last meeting, in section 6.1 of the act itself, it says, except is provided in section four, which is if you own personal property, you can prohibit people from using marijuana in your personal property, a municipality may completely prohibit or limit the number of marijuana establishments within its boundaries. So, when the 56% of the general public voted yes for this marijuana act, they voted to allow municipalities to decide if they want to limit establishments or ban them from their boundaries. It did also contain a caveat that said individuals may initiate an ordinance to provide for the number of marijuana establishments allowed within the municipality, but that does not specifically allow or point out for referendum, so I think there will be legal challenges. We've reached out to different attorney groups, and they have no idea at what, what shape this is going to take, and, and whether it is even allowable under that act, or if it's allowable under the city's own charter or the state election law. So, initiative does allow citizens to propose statute and referendum, and allow citizens to repeal a measure. The MML attorney that gave us the training said, and I quote, "I think we're in for a lot of litigation, could be six to eight years before we have an answer on most of the questions." So, I wanted to address just shortly some of the questions that I've heard or seen, and some of the criticisms, just to provide a little bit of clarification from my perspective, and certainly would ask the other commissioners to pipe in if I'm off. It was noted that we made a knee-jerk reaction or a gut reaction, well, personally, I don't think so, 2008, the Medical Marijuana Act was passed 10 years ago, 2016, the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, and then 2018, this act came before us and it was passed. We as a commission, those that have been here for the 10 years, we've gone through numerous training sessions, we've gone through numerous conferences, we've read tons of articles, we've talked to other communities across the state of Michigan, and yes, we've reviewed the act. Is it long, is it confusing, will it take litigation to interpret, yes, do we know exactly how this will all pan out, no, and that's why we opted out, because we don't know, and the state of Michigan doesn't know, it's a mess. The state has 12 months to establish rules, if they don't, the municipality, not the state, becomes the regulatory body, and we have to issue a license within 90 days, if the state of Michigan can't figure it out in 12 months, how is Sioux-St. Marie going to figure it out in 90 days? We are just trying to buy time so that we can do the right thing by the people and establish proper guidelines. Just as a reminder, as I said, the Medicinal Act passed in 2008, Medical Marijuana Licensing Act passed on December 20th, 2016, by the legislature, and they had until 2018 to issue promulgate rules, they did not, so they had to issue emergency rules, they didn't do it in two years. And I know that there is a urgency in some people's minds, but just as a reminder, the Medical Marijuana Licensing Act, yes, is valid, and yes, you can apply for facilities. As of today, 108 communities have opted in out of 1,773, so only 6% of the state of Michigan has opted in, obviously, there are some questions as to the regulation that supports this. Medical marijuana law was passed in 2016, and as I said, they are issuing licenses, and you talk about the rush to, to be the first out of the block while they've been issuing them, and as of today, there's only one provisioning center in the upper peninsula, there are 37 downstate, 36 downstate, there's only eight processor licenses in the state of Michigan, there's only one grower class A, zero class B, eight class C, which consists of only five companies, so the big companies are going to be the ones coming in and, and operating these. As I said at the last meeting in Colorado, 75% of the communities opted out of recreational, this slow, this process is slow, it's deliberative, and it will take time to get the right product. I had reached out to the city manager and asked him what his thoughts were, and if I could ask him, but if I could get the floor back, Mr. Mayor?
You've had it.
The cost, the estimated cost of, of staff, if we chose to opt in today, what would we have to go through to try to figure out how to decipher all of this regulation and to put things in place, if, I could ask the city manager.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission, this is a topic that has been discussed internally, there are certainly positions which would be more involved with responding to the various levels associated with this issue, the city attorney, myself, the deputy city manager, police chief, fire chief, community development director, potentially the downtown development authority director, and the appointed members of the planning commission and city commission, all of those individuals, members, representatives, would have a significant time commitment, either to preparing a framework for this, or reacting to any rules promulgated by LARA. There are other departments which would have, be impacted as well at a secondary level, the building department, finance department, potentially review for utilities, we would anticipate in either direction that this would require hundreds of staff hours, that when you're taking a look at this, certainly where administration would start would be, before any permanent changes are put into place, soliciting public input in regard to... before any permanent changes are put into place, soliciting public input in regards to policy development, in regards to issues like separation requirements between a facility under the Facility Licensing Act or establishments under the recent act. Taking a look at zoning preferences for where establishments or facilities would go, for example, in the industrial park, reviewing restrictive covenants, reviewing any qualifications that may be in place from the foreign trade zone, and looking at the downtown framework, the legal framework from licensing, and certainly responding to any changes from LARA or changes from the legislature. And the degree to which, this is a question I've received on a couple of occasions, the degree to which that staff time may need to be duplicated, it does depend on the degree to which the rules from LARA would shift the statutory provisions which have been adopted.
Thank you. So you're saying hundreds of hours that could be upwards of, not to give wages away, but with benefits, I mean, we could be talking about $50,000 or more in cost that we would spend, I would think. And by doing so now, and then when the promulgation of the rules happens, we could have to duplicate that effort because we were going down the wrong path.
I would imagine that in terms of a cost, we'd have to average out all of the wages of the employees involved. I do think that if we started, some of that framework would carry over, depending on the degree to which the rules from LARA would change the landscape. But I would imagine at the same time, there would be time invested, taking a second look, reviewing, matching up any of the rules promulgated by LARA against the framework which would have been developed, and then potentially soliciting further public feedback after those rules have been received.
Okay, so there would be duplication of cost. And then going further into some of the other questions, fees, you know, we're foregoing a lot of fees by not opting in. Well, the fees, in accordance with the act, are up to $5,000 per facility, but they're to defray application administrative and enforcement costs. It's to cover expenses, period. Cities cannot assess fees in excess of the cost to administer. And as far as the tax benefit, the legislation does allow for a 10% excise tax on each retailer and micro-business itself, and it will be deposited into a marijuana regulation fund administered by the state treasurer. It's to expend dollars on the implementation, administration, enforcement, and second, until 2022 or at least two years, they're going to stick $20 million into a one or more clinical trials, research marijuana for medical condition of veterans, which I think is a great thing. But they're going to stick the money into those funds, and after that, and only if there's any money left over, they will distribute 15% to municipalities that have retail stores and micro-businesses. The way they allocate that is they allocate it in proportion to the number of retail stores and micro-businesses in your municipality. We all know that this act was aimed for the bigger urban centers. They will have the majority of the stores, so even if Sault Ste. Marie had a store that was the highest grossing marijuana sales store in the world, we would not get the money because of the formula. It's based on the number of stores, not on the dollars that are coming through the store. So you're going to have, and you already have stores that are popping up for the recreation. They are all downstate. There's only one in the UP. So the majority of that is going to be downstate. We're going to be kind of ripped off by the formula anyway. And I think that anybody that has analyzed this has said that we're probably not going to see any money out of the taxes anyway. The other good thing, though, is that there is a 70% of that 10% excise tax is going into school aid and transportation money that comes and filters down locally, and it does not have a condition of opting in. So we will not lose any benefit from that by taking our time and doing it the right way. Also, don't forget that this is federally illegal, so no banking system yet, and they have yet to figure out those rules. How many of the sales do you think are actually going to be claimed if they have no way of banking the money? Also, people had mentioned other areas are going to do it, and they're going to make a lot of money, Sioux Township, Kinross, others. Well, they have the ability to opt out and may possibly do that. I know that they have opted out of the medicinal marijuana at this point in time, Sioux Township and Kinross Township and others. Other states, we look at some of the other states, there was an article about Massachusetts and their massive sales, $400,000 in one day. Massachusetts is 65% of the size of the UP. It's smaller than the UP. It has 6.86 million people. A little bit different market, not even apples to trucks. Took them over two years to get from legislation to retail, and they have 200 towns in Massachusetts that banned or delayed licenses out of 351, so it's 57%. Oregon's had legal marijuana since 2000, forgot to write the date down. They have 95 bans out of 375 or 25%. Our sister city, Sioux Ontario, 2014, Oregon's had their legislation. Our sister city, Sioux Ontario, passed it in 2016, and they struggled to get their first one open, and their first one is owned by the government, and it's a distribution system by mail. So they don't even have a formula figured out yet, and their city council is going to have to figure out how they're going to do it. Chippewa County, people had said that we have a very high need. 2016, before the Medical Marijuana Act was passed, Chippewa County was ranked 75 out of 83 for medical marijuana cards. There were 16.7 per thousand residents, 1.7% of the population, so 75 out of the 83 counties. Some of the other comments were too derogatory to even mention here. Medical marijuana, I think that most of us were not opposed, and I'm not sure that any of us were even opposed to the recreational marijuana. I think we just wanted to make sure that the state has time to promulgate the rules, and we have time to get our zoning and rulemaking together as well. My opinion with the medical is now they tied it up in the confusing act that they just passed. It needs adequate time. We did opt out based on the recommendation of the attorney from Michigan Municipal League, and there are a lot of cities that are doing the same. In regard to the petition, yes, citizens have the right, but I think it will be subject to a legal challenge. I don't think that the act was very well-written, and even some of the marijuana-specific cannabis business times, they call it a train wreck, I think, in someplace. The petition might be subject to a legal challenge. The language in the act is not clear. An election can cost upwards of $5,000 to $6,000 to the community. The end result really is zero, because if you file a petition, you get a petition, even if you get the petition approved, you still cannot do anything until the state issues the rules. If the state doesn't issue the rules, then we have another 90 days, so it's kind of a moot point. I think if you, the supporters, were to follow proper protocol and we were to follow effective governance, you would reach out personally to commissioners, provide material and any productive information that you have. The commission could look at this and other ideas at goal-setting, which is the standards by which we've followed for many, many years, and that is coming up in a couple of months. So I think that's the extent of my comments at this point.
And it was, started at 8:00, and it's 8:20, so it's 20 minutes. That's not, that's not bad. We spent 20 minutes on a lot of different items. This is, certainly is an important topic, and I think you explained it very well. It's, again, the state is supposed to promulgate the rules in a year, and by cities opting out is sort of holding their feet to the fire, I think, because they don't get as much of a benefit, and we certainly don't have all the chaos, and we don't want the amount of chaos because we don't have the staff time or the attorney time that we would be in litigation, we feel, and that has been told to us by folks that we think are professional in the way they do their job, so that we take that as a, something that we, I guess as a commission, the vote feels important, so. Commissioner Twardy.
That was a very thorough presentation, so there's not a whole lot else to say. I think probably over the last two weeks, one of the things that frustrated me the most was probably the article in the evening news, how they used a very, very strong term, and I don't, I watched over the city commission meeting, and I don't remember one of the commissioners using the word prohibition. And the word prohibition was used in the article, and so I'm hoping I see Frank out there tonight, and so I'm hoping that Frank writes a really lovely article that just covers the facts. And the facts are that the commissioners who chose to vote yes on opting out believe that the state has the responsibility to set down the regulation, to set down all the rules and the guidelines so that city can follow suit on how to zone in and figure out how these, this brand-new style of business, it's a brand-new style of business, should be put into our community if we decide at some point it comes. And I just, I don't see the reason to rush ahead of the state. I mean, I, like you said, I think we need to hold their feet to the fire. They need to be responsible enough to respond first, and then we can follow suit afterwards. You know, stores can't come until December of 2019 anyway, so let's hope that the state comes out and they tell us how to guideline this. And so I'm hoping that there's an appropriate article written, so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, next item.
Item 200 Communications is from the Community Improvement Committee. Authorization to Release Survey on Rental Registration Program.
Okay, thank you. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As commissioners are aware, city administration has been working on drafting a community survey with the Community Improvement Committee in support of the pending analysis of the city's rental registration program. Given that significant changes to public policy are best made with the input of those affected, it is the intention of administration to survey the broadest cross-section of the community possible regarding their thoughts and opinions on the topic of housing rentals and the rental registration program. Included with the memorandum is the draft text for the consideration of the city commission pertaining to the survey's introductory message along with the associated survey questions. The intent of administration at this point in time would be to utilize an online survey tool along with the availability of paper copies for those without online access. Surveys would be protected by a personal identification number to prevent a survey taker from submitting multiple results or multiple responses. Request to participate in a survey would be sent by mail, likely via postcard, utilizing internal addresses, an address list for landlords' residential rental properties and citizens at large to ensure that the outreach is as thorough as possible. The tentative plan is to have the survey live for approximately 30 days' time, beginning sometime during the middle of January. This timing was chosen to maximize availability of LSSU students between January 7th, the start of the spring semester, and the February 22nd, beginning of spring break. Once results are received, they will be compiled for analysis and presented to the community and commission. Accordingly, my recommendation would be for the city commission to authorize city administration to release the survey on the rental registration program, utilizing the cover letter and questions as presented. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Commissioner Twardy.
Thank you. Just a question for the city manager. You didn't actually give a timeline. Did you give a timeline when this might be administered or available for the community to be able to take?
Right. That's the tentative plan, to have the survey live for approximately 30 days, beginning during the middle of January.
Okay.
And then which would terminate in the middle of February.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you for those dates.
If, a question, I guess, if a longer time is needed, we have, I know we've gone from three to 45 days sometimes on different things, so that is always an option, I guess. Commissioner Baker.
I was just curious, a question for the city manager. Were the landlords included in questioning and regarding the survey as far as coming up with questions? Were they, was input from the landlords used?
Thank you for that question. This was developed exclusively by administration with input from the Community Improvement Committee.
Do, in my opinion, I just feel the survey's good. I just think before we submit one out, that maybe we should look at input from the landlords as far as this survey goes to see where they may feel we could add another question or change a question to get some responses to maybe what they're looking for as well, rather than having to put out another survey down the road and try to get it all done in one time. I think that might be beneficial to have an accurate study done, I guess. Survey.
And certainly, that time would exist at this point in time, if it's the commission's pleasure. The tentative plan was to have the survey distributed in mid-January, so there is time in between now and then.
I believe there's 12 questions, there are 12 questions. I think 15 would be sort of a max that we would kind of look at, so if there were, and that's when I looked at that, I thought those are fairly questions that aren't going to take a lot of time to answer, I wouldn't think, so we should have people participating. But the input from, we've had, I know Jim McLeod, who has come to a different meeting, or Jason, or Stephanie Sabatine, you know, to take a look at it, maybe they come up with an additional question if we feel it's appropriate. I mean, that's, that'd be up to the committee that put it together. But I would say no more than, if there's 12 now, no more than three at the most, I would think, just to, if that's within a purview. Commissioner Baker.
Can I make a motion, then, to send the survey back to the city administration to review with the landlords that have come and spoken on the issue, to see if they have any input on any questions that they may add with not exceeding a limit of 15 questions?
Question, discussion, or no, or? Anybody?
Was that a motion?
Yes.
Did you move?
Yeah.
I support it.
Okay. Commissioner Twardy.
Actually, on the, on the survey, there's, there is plenty of space. We were expecting that we would be receiving feedback from the landlords, and there was, there is plenty of space on the survey without, it will drag it out for at least another couple of months, because I know that Community Improvement Committee is not meeting until, I don't believe we're meeting until late January. So it will delay the survey getting out to the community for a couple of months, but, or you can leave space for open-ended questions, which is what the survey was intended to do.
I think Commissioner Talentino, one time, spoke about it being a thorough thing, so I would think it wouldn't hurt to, if it's, I mean, if you meet in Jan, in this December, so in December, there's a lot of activity, so it makes it tough to get folks together, but come January, and I don't think this, we're talking about, from what I'm looking at the questions, I wouldn't think this would be something that's real involved. It would be fairly, someone could answer the questions fairly appropriately. I would be, looks like the questions, not having a person that operates a rental institution, you know, rental property, would make some sense to have their input, at least on a questionnaire that, because our, our staff are talented, but there are certain things that may be, they would know that we wouldn't know. It just makes sense to ask a few of them. We don't, we don't have to get a big, because we're going to meet with those folks after anyway and go over the, the results, and we have one, one additional input anyway. Commissioner Talentino?
Thank you. These questions were designed to gain information, compile information, and then we were going to take it to the public, get their ideas, what they wanted to do. You can, if you read the questions, you can see they're for renters, non-renters, who I want to hear from. Landlords, they're for everybody, if you've seen these questions, okay? Sure, we can do what everybody wants, but this is going to slow the process, and just take it from there. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Gary?
I just wonder if, have you had comments from landlords? It looks like the questions are a very good blend and pretty innocuous, and also, number 12 is open-ended, so have you had comments that they didn't like the questions, or they were?
Well, I know that they would like input with, regarding the survey, and I think it's important that they have that. And again, it, this might slow the process a little bit because the Community Improvement is not meeting in December. However, if we submit the survey and then the landlords aren't satisfied with the questions that were asked to begin with, then it's going to take it even longer if we have to do another survey to go back. So in my opinion, I just think it, it'd be, and I think the landlords would... So in my opinion, I just think it, it'd be, and I think the landlords would like to have input on it and maybe a few questions put on it, and getting it all done and right the first time versus having to go back, and that's why I made the motion.
Yeah, exactly. It's a survey, so we make them survey questions that are relatively easily answered. I would think that, that shouldn't take a lot of, a lot of effort to come up with questions, especially with some of their, they might have some concerns that we don't, we don't have any idea what they would be. And as long as we're going to the public, we're going to renters, we're going to additional landlords, we'll try and cover all the bases. Okay, we ready for, is a motion in support? Any other comments? Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Gary.
What was the motion again? Is there a timeframe for input or, or a way that we can speed it along and get it back to the Community Improvement Committee?
The motion I made was just to send it back to city administration to talk to the landlords and get input from them on the survey and make any changes needed. So that would be up to the city manager.
Yeah, you could choose the landlords. I mean, it's up to you. Okay? Okay? Understand? Question?
And we could also, if it's the commission's pleasure, place it on the website as well for anybody who may be interested after hearing this discussion.
Sure.
Survey on the survey.
Comment on the survey. Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
No.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Motion, Gary. Thank you.
Item three under Communications is from Malcolm Park Pride Working Group. Co-chairs Kevin Pomeroy and Linda Bovee. Presentation and update.
Okay. Welcome, welcome back.
Thanks.
Good news for us.
Yes, we have good news today. So our, do you need me to say my name or are we good?
Pardon?
Okay. I'm Linda Bovee from the Malcolm Park Pride Committee, and this is Kevin Pomeroy. Our Patronicity.com campaign closed on Friday and we made our goal of $50,000 and we'll be getting, hopefully within forty-five days, the $50,000 in matching funds. I'm kind of sorry the tribal representatives left because they just took us over the finish line with a awesome $25,000 contribution of which you guys all were a part of. And so we think, rough estimate, we're around $70,000 right now, and that's not including the matching funds, that's not including the city match, so we are doing very well. We hope we're above what we need so we can implement some other phases to our program and then keep, continue into phase two. This is just phase one of what we want to do. The community input's been really good. I would say we have well over 500 donors when you count all the businesses that contributed, and we have many individuals that contributed as well. And the impact that this is going to have, as, as you know, is going to be on hundreds of children and adults. It's going to affect the whole town in a positive way and we couldn't be happier. So I'm going to let Kevin talk about what we're doing next, but I just wanted to let you know that we made it.
Well, before Kevin speaks, just let me mention, come to the mic, Kevin, thank, we just want to thank you for your leadership, both of yous. It's, it's been a tremendous undertaking. You know, the Ball Diamonds, you know, have been, you know, because of the budget situation that we face, it needed someone to step up and go out and ask additional people for additional help and you certainly were those people. And your group of, of people that went out and raised this kind of, you, did you say sixty-eight thousand is what, or seventy-eight?
Approximately seventy-eight thousand, plus the state matching funds.
And that's, that's excellent. And then, you know, the matching, the crowdfunding has, has worked in this community as, I think that's the third project that we've had. All of them have been very successful and certainly like to thank, again, you and, and your, your group for your foresight and then leading the charge.
This has been a three-year project. We started talking with Oliver back then and Dan Wires and Jim Merle, and so this has been a cooperative effort of, of, of beginning three years ago and now we're just starting to see some of the benefits that is going to be visible. But it's been a lot of people working together, having meetings and, and really what's doing what's best for the community. And so it's, it's very nice to see that hopefully next year we'll have a finished, this finished project. We also have a, a number of prod, or a number of people that are going to be donating. Obviously, the end of the fiscal year is not a good time. This, this last year, there was the 350th anniversary, there was a number of things in the Sioux that the business community gave monies, and so when we were going out and, and trying to raise additional monies, they've already gone through their monies that they had set aside for donations. So there are a number of businesses that said at the end, at the start of the fiscal year that they're going to do donations. And now that Patronicity's over, you still can donate to the Chippewa County Community Foundation and still get your tax deductions. And so if we do have any additional funds left over after our building project, we're just going to go down the list of about fifty things that need to be done up at Malcolm Park and identify another large project and just use those additional funds to continue to improve the facility. Dan Wires and Jim Merle, over this last summer and fall, have done an assessment up there, and so we have a plan in place, joint effort between the city and, and our committee. And so now there's, there is definitely a, a plan moving forward to start knocking off some of these projects that are much needed.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker?
First, again, off of the mayor's sentiments, thank you for all your hard work in Malcolm Park Pride and everything that was done. It's amazing to see the fruition of a project come to life and the process of it and the, the moments where everybody cried, I'm sure, at one point and screamed, and then to have a moment like this is pretty epic, and I can't be more proud of our community for stepping up the way it did, as lo, as well as our volunteers. And then thanks, huge thanks to the Sioux Tribe for their generous donation, for putting us over the top. Like Kevin and Linda stated, there's many, many, many more things up at Malcolm Park that need to be addressed. This was just the first of many, but you guys did it in a year and that is a huge, huge accomplishment, and I, I can't be more happy for our community and because of you guys. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lynn and Abby, and thank you for your help. The next step, we've already gone out to bid with some different people as far as doing the blueprints, and as soon as we have some preliminary blueprints, we'll be getting with the city and, and making sure we're meeting all the guidelines and things, and hopefully in early spring, we'll be able to go out to bids so we have a, a hard, fast number for construction.
Great. Thank you. Thank you again very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, okay.
Item four under Communications is from Sioux Area Public Schools. Request to develop and adopt an ordinance regulating e-cigarettes or vaping.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Welcome.
I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak before you tonight, so I'll have some prepared remarks and be happy to answer questions when I'm finished. Good evening, Mayor Baspus, city commissioners, and city manager Turner. Thank you for the opportunity to come to you this evening regarding the use of electronic cigarettes by minors. This practice, commonly referred to as vaping, has increased dramatically in our schools. In fact, we have confiscated electronic cigarettes from students as young as middle schoolers. This is an issue faced by all schools in our region, as evidenced by a letter signed by area superintendents in support of an ordinance that would restrict minors from using and/or possessing e-cigarettes. Additionally, War Memorial Hospital has submitted a letter in support of this effort, and I believe that you have been provided with copies of both of those letters. A little, very, very brief history on them. E-cigarettes were initially developed to help smokers cut back on or quit smoking altogether. Juul, you may have heard of Juul, one of the largest manufacturers in the nation, is actually, they actually, sometimes it's referred to as a verb now, I'm going to Juul now, which is weird to me, but that's some of the language. Over time, Juul and other manufacturers added scents and flavors to e-cigarettes in an effort to expand the market and attract more customers. This effort attracted younger customers, and the practice of vaping has now made its way down to minors and into our schools. Unfortunately, there seems to be a misconception by youngsters that because vaping does not include actual cigarettes, that it is not dangerous, but in fact, nothing could be further from the truth. Some of the chemicals in the vape juice are very dangerous. For example, a recent study by the American Heart Association found that some flavors cause negative effects on endothelial cells that line the blood vessels and inside of the heart, which is a precursor to heart disease. Part of the difficulty in this situation is that e-cigarettes are often produced to resemble a computer flash drive. This makes it easier for kids to conceal them and much more difficult for schools and parents to recognize. And we have photos of the ones that we've confiscated that look exactly like a computer flash drive. And almost every kid today is used to using flash drives, they have them all the time, they use them for homework, they use them for all those sorts of things. Unfortunately, now they're also using them to vape. Schools have policies that address tobacco and electronic cigarette use while students are at school or on school property. This includes school buses. In fact, I was just talking with one of our principals today and three of her kids were caught vaping on a school bus just last week, late last week. We are fortunate in our district that we have the student health center attached to the high school. Students who are caught with tobacco or electronic cigarettes are referred to the tobacco cessation class at the shack prior to receiving a school suspension. Repeat offenders, however, do face suspension. What brings me here this evening is the absence of corresponding laws or ordinances governing vaping by minors when they're not at school. I'm aware of at least three bills in Michigan Senate and House that were submitted in January and May of 2017 and previously shared that information with you. Unfortunately, these bills are still languishing in committees with no timetable on when they may move out of the committees. I paid very close attention to some of the comments earlier that you're concerned about jumping out ahead of the, of the state on some ordinances. I support you in that endeavor and urge you to take caution, but in this case, the state is not acting. Those bills have been there for well over a year, moving on to two years for one of them. They are not taking this cause up. We have a responsibility to do this at the local level. In the absence of action by the state, I and my colleagues feel this issue must be addressed locally. I have provided you with background information on an ordinance passed by the city of Howell in collaboration with the Howell Public Schools. Brighton Schools and the city of Brighton are working on a similar ordinance. I am meeting with Chippewa County Commissioners later this week to seek their support for a county-wide ordinance as well. We, as school officials, certainly understand that law enforcement officers have higher priorities than vaping by minors, and we do not seek to add to their already long list of responsibilities. However, we think it important that they at least have the option of having another tool in their toolboxes when dealing with minors. Kids don't always understand the dangers of some of their activities, so adults must occasionally step in and take action. Slick marketing and a laissez-faire attitude about vaping have created a community health issue that must be addressed. We owe this to our kids. It is important to notice, or to note, that an ordinance of this nature that we're, that school officials are asking you to consider will not affect retailers. They can't sell them now to minors, so this wouldn't affect retailers. There's going to be no loss of business for those who are selling them legally to adults. So it won't affect any businesses. It won't affect any use by adults. We're simply asking, telling you, we need some help in, in terms of enforcement and some sort of sanction, if you will, for kids who are possessing these things and using them to ingest harmful chemicals into their bodies. I respectfully request the city consider and adopt an ordinance prohibiting minors from using and possessing electronic cigarettes, the practice known as vaping. Again, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening, and I look forward to any questions you may have.
Just have a question maybe for the city attorney. If, if you approach the county and if they pass an ordinance and it's different from ours, then which one prevails? Or would we be premature in doing one prior to the county looking at it?
If the county passes an ordinance, it will cover the entire county, including the city of Sioux St. Marie.
So it'd be more beneficial for all of us if the county were to address it, rather than the city?
Well, geographically, the county's a lot bigger place than the city is.
Yeah. Have you had discussion with them or is this?
I meet with the county on Thursday.
Okay.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yeah, I think that I would, I would, I mean, I'm hoping that the county will adopt an ordinance, and I'm not sure if you're going to supply them with the same ordinance that we have here in front of us, or?
They have all the same information that you do. In fact, I'll likely read the same speech to them.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I know, we spoke on the phone this morning, and one of the things that I am concerned about is, one of the things my seventeen-year-old told me that he gets concerned about is his friends that are now putting harder drugs into the vaping cigarettes, and, and you wouldn't know. I mean, you don't know unless you're testing, and I know molly is a really bad drug out there, and there's no smell to it, and it, you know, it's pretty, it's pretty severe for children. I am concerned about how it would be managed, I guess, at Sioux Area Public Schools, so if the ordinance was to be adopted, we're already short-staffed at our city police department. How, would they be called down to the school to help manage it, or would it still be just managed within the school system?
Good question. It'd be managed the same way that we manage tobacco, which minors can now get an MIP for if we, if we do contact authorities. School policy allows us to, again, first send them to a tobacco cessation class, which we do. If they don't go to that or don't successfully complete it when they're there, we then do suspend. If they repeat offend, we'll consider each individual student, that situation individually. They may go back to the class, we may suspend at that time. We rarely, if ever, call specifically because a minor has tobacco. We would not call in the case of a student possessing a vape. We would handle that internally. However, having said that, there are those situations that we deal with when we do have to contact law enforcement, and sometimes that hammer, if you will, and I'm, I don't want to be over-dramatic, but sometimes that does help with our ability to modify some behavior of some of the kids. So we would not be calling the chief and, and the others just because a kid got caught with a vape, or with a, an e-cigarette. However, if there were something else going on there, and that was a part of that scenario, we may consider, may consider asking that they get a ticket for that, if, if the ordinance is adopted, the same way that we handle tobacco now, which is currently an offense that could be a misdemeanor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Gary?
Just a dumb question. It's illegal for them to buy these products?
Correct.
But there is absolutely no recourse if they get caught with these products at this point in time?
Correct. The, the three bills that, one at the House, excuse me, one in the Senate, two in the House, address that issue, but they've not been acted on, they're still languishing, as I said, in committees. Well, nearly two years for the first one.
Could I ask the city manager what our city police chief has to say about this?
City manager?
I would invite the police chief to come up and represent his perspective.
Gary, you need a stretch.
I just have one. Good evening, mayor, commissioners. Commissioner Gary, you just had a question, I believe it was, it might have been Commissioner Twardy, regarding minors buying versus possessing these.
Correct.
It's not illegal in the state of Michigan for minors to buy or possess these, right now, if they don't have nicotine. If they have nicotine, the state treats them as a tobacco product, and there are statutes in the state of Michigan regarding minors buying and possessing tobacco products. So if they have nicotine, it's illegal for them to possess and buy. A lot of these are advertised as not having nicotine. That's where we get into the issue, the device itself. It's not illegal in the state of Michigan for them to possess or buy the device. It is at the federal level, through the FDA, for a retailer to sell one of the devices to a minor. So the, the child's not in trouble. The gas station is in trouble for selling it. That's at the federal level. We don't enforce that as local officers. It's like if the county were to pass an ordinance on this, I'd rely on the sheriff's department to enforce it because they handle county enforcement, we handle local enforcement and state statutes. There is an avenue to report this to the FDA. The FDA on their website has a page. If we have information that this store is selling to minors, these things to minors, we'll submit the form, we can submit the form, anybody can submit the form to the FDA. They'll decide if they're going to do an investigation on it or not, and, and prosecute at the federal level. The FBI is not going to investigate it. They handle the federal investigations, but they're not going to. With regard to my opinion on this, I have my personal opinion, I have my professional opinion. I have been invited to attend the meeting this week with the county commissioners and with the county commissioners and Tim. I am going to be there. I've already talked to the county administrator, Jim German, on this. He called me up. I think it'd be advantageous at this stage to let us have the meeting, and everybody will have a say at the table. Before we, before I come in and express my opinion in front of you, I think it'd be best, let us have this meeting, see what we come up with, if anything. I do have one concern. If these are, if minors possessing these things are going to be treated like a misdemeanor, with the new state statute, they get caught with a cigarette or one of these things if it passes, it's a misdemeanor. That's criminal record. They can have a joint, that's a civil infraction, hundred-dollar ticket. Just something seems odd to me about that. So my recommendation, let us have the meeting, and then we'll go from there.
Commissioner Gary, you have a floor?
I just wanted to ask Dr. Hall what his perspective is on that. I think...
I think that most of the school officials and I would agree that a countywide ordinance would be appropriate. The concern that we, that Dr. Calstrum, superintendent J.K.L. and I have in town is whether or not, if we contact authorities, we don't know how this works. This, maybe Mr. Canelo can help clarify that for us. If we do have a situation that requires, or we feel requires, the issuance of a ticket in the city, when we contact central dispatch, they don't send the county into the city to handle that. That's a, there's guidelines and boundaries and all that. So we don't know if the, if the city could come in and write the ticket if we had that situation in school or not. So our only concern is from Dr. Calstrum's and my point. Again, she has K through eight over there and has taken these things away from middle schoolers, as have we. We just want to make sure that if we, as school officials, get to the point where we absolutely think that we need some, some student needs a ticket for these things, whether it's a county ordinance or a city ordinance, that we'll get support and have that ticket written. Now, in terms of the record and the differential that the chief makes out between what the possession of marijuana is and possession of tobacco and/or an e-cigarette with nicotine in it, I can't speak to that. Certainly, the chief is way more well-versed than that. What I do know is that if these things have nicotine in them and they're illegal, that puts them on the same par with cigarettes. And we currently have laws in place that can lead to a ticket, an MIP, a misdemeanor for kids possessing cigarettes. The chemicals in these things, if you haven't seen the videos, check out Google and see one of these things when it blows up in someone's face, literally, and takes the teeth out, or blows up in their pocket and burns their thigh. They're all over YouTube. These things are not just dangerous chemically inside the body, but they can explode as well. The other thing that we have a concern about as school officials, now that, and you guys had a long, intense discussion on marijuana this evening, now that that is something that has happened and passed in the state, there is the chance, and maybe, we don't want to be doomsday, you know, sayers or naysayers on this, but there is the likelihood that there could be more marijuana in kids' homes. You can go to YouTube now and learn how to actually cook the smell out of marijuana. Then take that leftover liquid and replace the liquid that's in the e-cigarette with that highly concentrated THC, and bring that to school and smoke it, and it's not nicotine. Now, yes, you are violating the law because you now have marijuana, but there's no smell to it. So we in the school world are very concerned about that law being passed in conjunction with the fact that there aren't any sanctions for kids possessing these e-cigarettes. There's a, as I said, a laissez-faire attitude about the danger about these things, and we think it's incumbent upon us as school leaders to bring this and seek support both at the city and the county level so that we can get some of these things passed so that we and law enforcement have this tool in our toolbox.
May the city attorney would answer the question, if it's an ordinance and what the...
The city police are authorized to enforce all laws and ordinances, no matter the origination of the legislation.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And it does make sense that we wait for the meeting with the county and see where that goes?
If I can interrupt, I think all of the superintendents would be fine with that, and I'll email that out to them today. We're getting similar, I think, support and at least the willingness to listen to us from the county that you folks graciously showed us. So we're comfortable that we'll have a very productive meeting with them on Thursday.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Gary, you?
Yeah, obviously, we're very concerned about the protection of our children, and very impressive that all of the superintendents are aligned on this and also the hospital. And I think that I would support it, but we, I would like to see more coordination with the county and the other law enforcement agencies. So with that, I think I would make a motion to refer it back to the city administration to work further with Dr. Hall and the schools to come up with a agreeable solution.
Support.
Commissioner Talantino, you have any comments?
No, actually, Commissioner Gary pretty much mirrored what I wanted to say about this. I realize it is a problem in the schools, as you know. We have goal-setting coming up, and I really wish there was some way we could get an ordinance officer back into our schools. I know it's tough from the school side. I know it's really tough from the city side. But I really think it's something that we need. We need it drastically, you know, because things aren't getting better. I wish I could say they were. I think we need to try to figure something out on that. I really do. And, I mean, I'm going to bounce my head on the wall trying to figure it out, just so you know.
Were you referring specifically to a school resource officer?
Correct.
Yeah, we would be very interested in having those discussions. I think, we all know the issue is budgetary for both the city and the schools. Maybe if we get a group together and sit down and figure out some ways that we could take a look at being creative on this, it would be very, very helpful. And I know that, and I know that school administration, and to be honest with you, the parents would feel very, very comfortable with the reimplementation of school resource officers in the district.
I just think there's a lot more things getting thrown at our youth nowadays that I don't think a lot of them can handle. You know, I think we, as adults, do need to step in on a lot of this. So I think that resource officer would be a bonus, and I hope we could get something together possibly in the future on that.
We would certainly be happy to look forward to those discussions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
We have a motion in support.
We have a motion in support? Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Basmas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Motion, Gary, thank you.
Item five under Communications is from James Zimmerman. Discussion on six-one, no vote to opt-out of marijuana stores being allowed inside city limits.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Zimmerman? If you'd introduce yourself for the record, we'd appreciate it.
My name is James Zimmerman from the Sioux. Commissioner Gary did address a lot of the things that I was going to say in here, and we've been here for a long time tonight. So I'm going to kind of just get right to the meat and potatoes of what I, kind of changed a little bit of what I was going to say. I do agree that there's a lot of murkiness in the laws for the medical, or excuse me, for the recreational marijuana. From my understanding, on the twenty-seventh of November, the medical marijuana laws for Michigan were finalized. So what is stopping us now from bringing in medical marijuana shops into the store for those people like myself and many others who have been, basically, their lives have been saved by this plant? Okay? And in doing so, you bring a whole lot of help to people that our local doctors, our professional doctors, prescribe for their patients. And we don't even have a store or anywhere to get our medicine within a five-hour round trip out there. There's things out there for psoriasis, severe arthritis. I mean, all the great things that everybody, well, most people on this board said that they're supporting of medical marijuana. What is stopping us now from bringing in medical marijuana into the city as far as the dispensaries and stuff? At least opening the doors and letting, you know, people get a chance to see our, you know, what we have to offer here? Now, the biggest thing that I'm asking for is someone on this board to see if we can have a call for a motion to rescind, reconsider, or whatever is appropriate, to allow medical marijuana dispensaries within the city limits now, that the finalized law has been done on the twenty-seventh, as far as Michigan goes. And eventually, maybe one day, once all those kinks and everything work out, we might be able to start bringing in recreational. And if at that point, by the time the state's recreational laws are done, if it's, you know, complete garbage and we don't want to jump into it, at least we have the medical here for the people that actually need it and not the recreational stuff. But I think step one would be a big leap is if we could maybe go back and at least reconsider the medical marijuana laws in town now that they are finalized, and that was since your last meeting. It's a new thing. So if they are finalized as of the twenty-seventh, like I believe they are, would it be possible to have a motion to look back at the medical marijuana facilities in town? Not the recreation. You brought up a whole lot of good points as to why to wait, and that's what I'm moving towards now. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. If you're all done, then your comment time has ended?
Yeah, that was it. It was a whole, it was going to be a lot longer, but he did a great job of explaining a lot of things. So straight to the point, everybody's been here for a while.
Thank you for coming up.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks. With James' concern, the city manager has some comments about, in, some of us, I know myself, you know, we need the education. We need the state to do their thing. And medical marijuana is a, is a, it's proven, and much as you say, that the well-being and having people drive five-hours round trip to get something that they medically need. You know, we got, we got veterans that have to go to Iron Mountain for services and that kind of stuff. But if we can do it locally, fine. And then, and then all of a sudden, because of this law that was just passed, the city manager has some information about why we have to wait. And that's, that's something that I think is important that we do. But I also agree that we could use some of that. But if we do, then we jeopardize other things. City manager?
So to that point that the mayor made, there is a clause in the recently adopted Act, Section six-five, that the commission should be aware of as it enters into this conversation, which states that municipality may not adopt an ordinance restricting transportation of marijuana through the municipality, or, more pertinent to this conversation, or prohibits a marijuana grower, a marijuana processor, and a marijuana retailer from operating within a single facility, or from operating at a location shared with a marijuana facility operating pursuant to the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act. In other words, the act which was adopted during the recent vote is tied to the Facilities Licensing Act. So there is a connection between the two. All the city attorney may wish to speak to that further as well.
City attorney?
That's what the section says.
Very succinct. Commissioner Baker has a question or a comment?
Question for the city attorney, as far as the state level goes. And in 2012, when the commission voted to essentially do what we did last meeting with recreational with waiting to see what the state does. The state has now finalized their plan. They're issuing their license. They have regulations and everything in place for medical. Correct?
To my knowledge, recently, the state has allowed one hundred or so provisionally licensed businesses to stay in business due to the onset of the legalization of marijuana. Those were medical facilities that were due to be closed because they were not, the licensing for them was not completed. That's the last thing I'm aware of.
So with moving forward as far as the state's concerned, so to speak, they're issuing, they're going to be issuing medical licenses right away, because that's all set in place?
Well, they have been already.
Right.
But they, they're slow in doing it.
Right. So as far as the city goes, we're waiting for recreation, which I understand. But now that medical, why, what's stopping us exactly from allowing medical retail, grow, and research facilities within city limits under the guidelines that the state's already put in place?
For medical marijuana?
For medical marijuana, not recreation.
Under the Medical Marijuana Act?
Under the Medical Marijuana Act.
Well, as the manager indicated, there is somewhat of a link between the two provisions. The, I'll read the provision again. Manager read it. I'll read it one more time. A municipality may not adopt an ordinance that restricts the transportation of marijuana through the municipality, or prohibits a marijuana grower, a marijuana processor, a marijuana retailer from operating within a single facility, or from operating at a location shared with a marijuana facility operating pursuant to the Medical Marijuana Licensing Act. As has been mentioned before, there's a lot of unknowns in this statute. And I don't read this myself, but I could be wrong, to say that if you had a licensed medical marijuana facility, you were automatically opening the door to retail sales. I'm not reading it that way?
For recreation. I'm just saying.
Well, when I say retail sales, that's what I mean.
Okay, okay.
Medical marijuana is not open for retail sales. You must be a patient.
Okay.
So... I'm not reading this section as indicating that if you allow a medical marijuana facility of some type, you are automatically allowing a medical retail facility.
So my question to you the next would be, as a city, since we opted out of recreation, if we opt into medical within our own, with the ordinance that we choose to adopt, could we say we're only allowing medical in and we're not allowing any kind of recreation until the state gets there? Couldn't we put that directly in our ordinance?
I'm not sure it would be necessary to put it in there. You know, the opt-in to the medical provision is specific, and the opt-out to the retail is specific. The city has already passed an opt-out to retail facilities. The city has not opted in to medical facilities. I think they're two different things in that the city would be free to opt into medical facilities without, in my opinion, opening the door to retail facilities. However, that's just my opinion, and I could be wrong.
So, the floor? Okay. So just a few things. One, I'm going to reference the Marijuana Policy Project, which is the largest, largest organization working solely on marijuana policy and reform in the U.S. And, you know, there's been talk about Washington and Colorado and the things that were negative when they legalized it. But just for some of the flip side of things, in 2017, Colorado collected more than $200 million in taxes off of marijuana. 2017, Washington generated more than $400 million from their excise and sales tax. City and towns raised millions in local taxes and fees.
Commissioner Baker, excuse me, are we talking about medical marijuana?
Yes, this is medical, and I'm just giving some background.
Okay, because we've already been through that. Okay, 'cause you, we've already been through that.
Yeah, I know, not, this is directed towards medical, so just let me work through it.
Quickly, 'cause we, 'cause you'll have an opportunity to, to talk about that, but, if we're talking about medical marijuana-
I'm talking about-
You would like us to change our, are you, are you asking us to?
I would like to continue.
Right, you have a goal, then, okay.
So, anyway, um, graduation rates have increased in both states, um-
We've seen it, yeah.
We've issued, we've, um, we approved the needle exchange program. I believe we did that, uh, for the safety and the health and well-being of our citizens, and I believe, um, moving towards legalizing, I feel like making a motion to allow medical marijuana facilities within the city of Sioux State Marie for grow operations, research facilities, and medical retail, if you will, um, would be a good compromise with the voters, since they did vote, you know, a 56 to 44 range, which is a huge margin when it comes to elections. I don't wanna see a petition go forward and then waste of $5,000 in tax-paying money for something that, in my opinion, the voters have already spoke on as far as recreation. So, I feel like the, the city moving towards medical is a good compromise, and that way, it'll allow us to give the state time to work out the kinks with recreational. As far as I can tell from, um, the recreation side, they're already, the state's already going to bat to try to withdraw the amount of plants that people can grow, which I expected, 'cause that's an obscene amount, so, which is gonna make it harder again for people to get what they need. Um, so with that said, I would like to make a motion to allow the sale of medical marijuana within city limits, as well as grow ops and research facilities.
Let me just comment on that, because I would think if, if I would look at approving anything, would be to send it back to the city administration to look at the possibility of what the effects would be if we went, if there was a, um, if the city wanted to go that way, because I think as the city attorney suggested, he may be wrong, and I would like to talk to the Michigan Municipal League and some other, um, cities that have possibly gone back into it, because I think, I speak for the commission, um, the medical side of the marijuana, um, if, if in fact, um, we don't open the door to that, um, to recreational growers type of thing, and you all of a sudden can't opt out because you have this happening, uh, as the, um, the law, one person reads it one way, and one, the person reads it another way, I'd like to see where it is in the state, than, than us being the one leading the way. And that wouldn't take a whole lot of time, other than a, maybe several months to, to get that information and make sure there's no litigation out there, because if it's going on, we're gonna know about it, and, and to review that, at least review the, the possibilities, because I think then we, that opens up a whole other discussion, okay? Uh, Commissioner Gary?
And to your point, Mr. Mayor, uh, and to your point, Mr. Mayor, I have a copy of the Michigan Municipal League, uh, white paper from the attorney of Kalamazoo.
Okay.
And he's referring to specifically that verbiage you just read, and he said, "This latter prohibition raises the question whether communities that have opted in to the Medical Marijuana Act, and where a medical marijuana facility is operating, may even opt out of the med, uh, the most recent act, since the proposed act, uh, Section 17 provides that it is to be broadly construed to accomplish the purposes set forth under the act." So, uh, as you've said, I think there's too much question, and we need to get the legalities answered before we move forward, and I'm not opposed, nor am I a proponent of, of either, and I wanna gather all the information that's necessary to make an informed decision and do what's best for the entire community, because it's about a 50-50 split, 56-44, so.
Okay, anyone else? There was a motion, was there support? Okay, okay, moving on. Uh, no, we're gonna move on?
I'd like to make another motion.
Excuse me?
Can I make another motion?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make an, uh, a motion for the city admin, administration and the commission to revisit the existing ordinance that the city proposed in 2012 on January 16th for, uh, the medical marijuana within city limits, and for the city attorney or city manager administration to find out if the city attorney is correct on how he feels that this will not-
What the ramifications are?
What the ramifications are. Now, everybody said that we wanted to figure out, so I just wanna make a motion. The motion is for the city administration to revisit the ordinance that was established in 2012 by the city as far as the medical marijuana within the city limits, and to determine whether Mr. Canelo is correct on a statement on if we revisit that ordinance and redo it, if it will-
Let's not use Metro Canelo as, as the person, won't we just say generally, 'cause, you have a question?
I have, I have a question, and I'm, I'm, I'm not familiar with the ordinance you're talking about.
In 2012, January 16th, wasn't that-
I know.
For medical growers?
That, that ordinance has been struck down by the Court of Appeals.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
We did not go way back, we just not go, not that-
So, that wasn't the ordinance that we have against the-
No, we, we have no ordinance against medical marijuana. Medical marijuana law required us to affirmatively opt in to medical marijuana. We were automatically opted out by the legislation. The Recreational Marijuana Act is the opposite.
Right.
You must opt out, or you're deemed in. Medical, you're deemed out unless you opt in.
Okay.
So, we don't have an ordinance dealing with-
Okay.
-opting out of medical marijuana. We did pass, uh, an ordinance on home occupations, uh, for caregivers. Uh, that's the provision where someone can have five patients, and they can have up to 12 plants per patient, and, and we said that had to be in, as a home occupation. The Michigan Court of Appeals, and this was brought up at the seminars that, that we had on the recreational marijuana as well, the Court of Appeals struck those down.
Okay.
And said the caregivers can go anywhere they wanna go and do it.
Even within our city limits?
Correct.
So, a medical marijuana grower right now could open an establishment downtown?
No.
A caregiver.
A caregiver.
A caregiver, could, could have their caregiving operation-
On downtown Street Ashman. Now, how is that for medical pertaining to grow ops and research facilities?
We haven't allowed those.
Okay, so you've just, we've only allowed the homegrown caregivers?
Yeah, I would, I would have to double-check that to make sure, 'cause, because I haven't read that, that home occupation ordinance in a long time, so, I'd have to double-check that and be sure.
Well, with that said, then, I'll make a motion to refer back to the city administration to find out exactly the legalities of opting into medical marijuana, and how it affects with the recreation, if that's going to put us into a slippery slope, or if-
That's good, now if I understand, I think they understand what you're asking. Any questions? Uh, is there support for the motion? Is there someone else like to make a, a motion that is similar, but is more understandable? I don't know, is there, no problem, okay, at this point? Okay, we're moving on. Thank you. Thank you, James.
Item 6 under Communications is from Glenda King.
Good evening.
Let me just say, Glenda, and, and we appreciate the time that you, you know, have, have come back and forth, but when I see an agenda item that just says Glenda King, and there's nothing beside it, if you, if you would have just a topic or some, um, something about what-
Sure.
Would, would help, okay?
Um, I wrote my email just communications from Glenda King, but, um, my name is Glenda King, and I'll begin.
Okay.
This is about the summary of our discussions regarding rental registration. I kinda just recapped what has transpired. Stephanie Sabatine and I came to the mayor and city commission several times this year to discuss rental registration with you. We talked, and you watched. There wasn't much discussion. This is what I've taken away from this experience. The unfair rental registration self-certification form and fees will not be held in abeyance this year. The members of the Community Development Committee are Commissioner Torri, Commissioner Talantino, City Manager Turner, City Attorney Canelo, City Police Chief Riley, City Fire Chief Labonte, City Building Official Aikenen, Community Director, Community Development Director Freeman, Community Development Coordinator McBride, as needed, and Citizens Representative Patricia Shimmens. Ordnance Enforcement Officer Brown was not listed, but from your meetings, I am aware he does also attend these meetings. He provides his expertise and shares his experiences with the committee. The committee members seek out blight properties, and they decide which properties are selected for enforcement action. The committee will not meet with the landlords until the citizen's survey is completed, and we heard about the survey this evening, and it sounds encouraging. Um, the committee will meet with rental property owners sometime in February, but it sounds like it's gonna get pushed back a little bit. The committee will create the rental registration policy before meeting with the property owners. The registered landlords will have no voice in the creation of the policy. Is that, okay? At a previous meeting, you had said, "Well, we have to create the policy first before we meet with the landlords."
No, I don't, that wasn't what I, what-
Okay, I misunderstood.
Okay.
Okay. Um, taxpayers who voice opposition to our city government don't seem to fare well. I'd like to give you a couple of examples.
Mayor, I would request that Ordnance Enforcement Officer Brown address the commission.
If, uh, Robert, if you could maybe wrap things up a little bit, a little-
Sure.
If, if you can, if, if we need to see all the information, fine, but-
Sure, and I do, I do now have a PowerPoint on this one.
Okay.
Um, but feel free to ask me questions. Again, there was a lot of information given to you. Um, uh, Mrs. King, you guys know it was a, uh, a city employee. Um, the house next to her that she's referring to that was illegally converted was passed on to the building official, and I cannot and will not speak for him. There were letters sent. Maybe you were provided with that information already. Uh, the, after Mrs. King most recently, um, brought it to our attention, as I would any complaint, I contacted the owner, um, she is a Canadian, and she, I, I spoke to her probably for 45 minutes to an hour. Uh, the story on that was she bought the house for her mother to fix up, her mother was ailing, and her mother and, uh, her sister were going to live there. Uh, why, the sister takes care of the mother, nothing wrong with that. Could you, in your house, any one of your houses, you could have two kitchens in. Uh, at the time of the complaint, that, uh, in 2010, the house was not occupied, and it was a blight house. Indeed, it was a house that Mrs. King, I was told, was trying to purchase. She was outbid by this gal who owns it now. She bought it for her mother. Uh, her mother fell extremely ill. During that time, Mrs. King contacted the owner during Mrs. King's employment of the city, and asked her to rent it to her daughter. Reluctantly, she rented out. Um, Mrs. King did not bring it to our attention that her own daughter, for six years, lived in an illegal rental. Plain and simple. We cannot catch everyone, we have a city employee housing their daughter in an illegal, according to her, illegally converted rental, and still we did not know. So, how are we gonna catch every one of them? She worked 50 feet down the hall.
That's definitely my character, she did say that for four years.
Hi, excuse me. She did say that, but we're getting information from her staffers, okay?
And if it's four years or six years, I could, I could be wrong, maybe it's not six years. For any point in time that she lived there, uh, she did not bring it to our attention that her daughter was living there, and it should be a registered rental. So, that's what we work with.
That makes me sad. So... Here's my response. Who will seek, or who will use, who will speak for Building Official Aikenen, who is also a member of the Community Development Committee? OEO Brown, who provides his expertise to the Community Development Committee, has spoken. The big old house sitting on three lots could have been magnificent, but instead ended up the problem and a negative effect on property values. Mr. Brown spoke to the person from another country for 45 minutes to an hour, but he did not speak to the 30-year neighborhood resident and the 20-year city employee. Her mother was never there, the house had been foreclosed on by the bank, left without heat over a winter, and was a total freeze-up. No heating system and no plumbing. The only thing that ever had to do with her mother at that house was the mail that was sent from a nursing home in Sioux, Michigan, to that address. The property owner attached an extra mailbox onto the back of the house and instructed my daughter to place all the mail from the nursing home in the back mailbox where she put the monthly rent payments. Someone would come from Canada once a month to pick up the rent and the mail from the nursing home. Draw your own conclusions. The house was converted into a duplex when the owner separated the upstairs from the downstairs with a door that has locking devices on both sides of it. The door is located at the top of the interior staircase, creating two separate units, with each having a kitchen and a bathroom. The cheap interior door that was installed to separate the units is not the proper door required for fire separation. I was never aware of a system. Mr. and Mrs. King, Mr. and Mrs. King's $37,000 bid was accepted, but as much as I'd loved and wanted the big old house, the contractor estimates for a complete new boiler system with baseboards and a new plumbing system and fixtures, along with numerous other needed repairs, was extremely costly, and without selling our home, was too much of a risk to take. We opted out of the purchase, and our contractor estimates and our property appraisal were passed on to the individual who bought it for $37.5. I did not contact her and ask her to rent to my daughter. The owner approached me at the fence between our house and asked me if I knew anyone who would be interested in renting her house. She said that she had ran an ad in the paper, but all she was getting was calls from college students, and she said she didn't wanna do that because it was too nice of a neighborhood. She offered the apart, one apartment for 500, or both units for 650 a month. At that time, both of, both my 34-year-old son and my 26-year-old daughter were living in rentals in the city, so I asked them if they were interested. My daughter and her husband rented the entire house from July 2011 to July 7, 2017, while my daughter worked in the accounting office and as customer service manager at Glenn's Market, and also earned her bachelor's degree in psychology from Lake State. Can I finish this? Okay. So, she was then accepted into Oakland University, and her husband and her relocated to Pontiac, Michigan, in July 2017. My daughter is currently completing her master's degree in experimental psychology, and has now been accepted into Oakland's PhD program. The fact that my 26-year-old daughter and her husband lived there for six years is my adult daughter's business. My daughter is now 32. She has also watched the video and has listened to Mr. Brown's statements. My daughter is deeply offended. I did not house my daughter anywhere. My daughter is an adult, and she makes her own decisions. In 2010, I e, I emailed the illegal conversion complaint to Building Inspector Aikenen and requested to be informed of the outcome. I was never informed. Building Inspector Aikenen worked on the other side of the wall from me, and still did not ever say anything to me. I inquired into the status of the complaint in 2018, and what do I get? Character defamation. I brought it to your attention in 2010 and was ignored. This year, eight years later, I asked for a response to my complaint, and instead of giving me a response, you attacked my character. How dare you speak of me like that? How dare you speak of my daughter at all? Please remove the video from your city's website, and I will end my presentation with photos of investments that my husband and I have made in your city. That's our home on West Fifth Avenue. Before and after, we rehoused it in 1997. The house next door to it, the subject structure was beautiful at that time. That was $70,000 worth, that's a lot of hard work. We worked, and we worked, and we worked, the whole family. This is our rehab on Augusta Street. Before and after, we put $35,000 in this property, and we sold it last year to, it's now owner-occupied. And that's a lot of hard work, that was a blight property, and there again are my family- That was a blight property, and there again are my family helping. This is our John Street rental property that we own. We put $40,000 into that. I don't think, you know, we shouldn't treat investors with disrespect.
Thank you very much. Stephanie? Okay.
I want to comment on Glenda King's presentation. I agree with her. We should not be treating investors like that. I was made an example for a lot of money. I'm paying you the least amount I can per month because I disagree with these fines. I presented things that counteracted the accusations prior to them ever happening, and nothing was done. I'm still paying fines. I'm not happy about it. I just don't think you should treat your investors that way. And as far as this survey goes, I think it's going to take more than a survey and a couple of meetings to get, you know, our input. We've been giving you our input for all along. I've been giving you my input for probably over 20 years. I don't think the rental registration program is going to solve anything. And I looked at your survey, and I think it's geared towards college students. College students typically are temporary residents. They don't stay here and pay taxes. They don't buy properties and fix them up. You have the people here, right here. I think you really need to work with us because we're the experts. You know, the community at large, if you want to do the survey, I think that's fine. But I also think you need to do a survey on a couple of other areas, like why do we not have jobs? You know, we're living in, a lot of us live in poverty. We work two and three jobs. It's just not right. I think we need a survey on our waterfront. What could be done with our waterfront? If we're going to get into surveys, we can create those online through Survey Monkey. It's pretty easy to do, so... But I just wanted to say that it is unfortunate that you ignore our input. We're here. We spend a lot of time preparing to come to this. I have work to do. I'm here. I'm sitting here for four hours, blowing four hours for a three-minute presentation. And I just think it's, you know, senseless. This is, this whole process, you need to work with your investors, bottom line. If you look at your sister cities, I just met a woman today from Marquette. We had a great discussion on how they do work with their investors. There's a lot of new businesses flourishing. You can take a drive from Three Mile Inn and probably count 30 empty commercial spaces. That says a lot. As far as the landlords go, I think it's unfortunate that we don't have any representation on this Community Development Board. I think we need to be on that. We need to have, it makes perfect sense to have people on the, who are landlords, who are investors, on this Community Development Board. The board's made up of entirely city administration and one citizen representative. It's not even on your website. I think you need to put that board on your website and let people know when they're, when you're meeting. When is the next meeting? Can the public go? Those are questions I have.
Okay. Thank you.
No answer?
Those are good comments. Those are excellent.
Well, I have a question. I want to get it answered.
When's the next meeting? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, when's the next meeting of the Community Development Meeting?
City Manager?
The Community Improvement Committee is an internal advisory board where they provide feedback to the ordinance enforcement officer for his execution of duties. The composition of the board is certainly something that is duly noted and could research.
Okay, well, again, we're the investors. I think we have important things to say.
Going forward, we're, and maybe that's a possibility, going forward, the, I would think that we have the discussions with the landlords, and we've gotten the information back from the community. We have a few more things that we can discuss, and maybe that would be part of it.
Okay.
Okay.
I think it's important that we be notified, too, please. You can Google me and find me. I never take vacation, so...
Well, what the manager's saying, I think, is that it's a internal committee that doesn't have public input at that point.
Right, so the Community Improvement Committee, its internal advisory board is such that it directs the work activities of an employee. Certainly, Community Improvement Committee has a lot of feedback to the city commission as a whole, most recently, but also through the issuance of annual reports. So it does put out summarized statements of its work activities.
Okay. Well, I did a search on your website. Couldn't find the board anywhere. So, and I'm pretty savvy with websites. I think if I can't find it, probably a lot of people can't, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Did you have a question?
Do you have a question, Stephanie?
I was just going to make a comment.
A comment? Okay.
Yeah. It is an advisory board, so the reason that Robert's not on the board is because he's the employee of the board.
Right.
He's the person that the board responds to. And a lot of the information that we receive in that committee is, it's not great sometimes because it, they, we're dealing sometimes with really sad situations within the community that doesn't necessarily deal with you, obviously, but it deals with some other areas where people are living in situations that should not be public knowledge and for personal reasons. And sometimes you, you realize that people, and we have to bring in HPH, and there's some pretty sad situations, and so that's why it's an internal advisory board. However, I think one of the things that we have discussed at the Community Improvement Committee is, and I think even at the commission as a large, is we were talking about maybe having a landlord advisory board to the city.
I think that'd be a very wise investment, and not only landlords, investors as well.
Correct. And I think that these are all discussions. It's not going to be one discussion with the landlords and one discussion with the community. The reason I voted no on the survey tonight is I want to get the survey out there. There was a lot of area in the survey for you to say other questions that maybe you wanted asked and answer those. And I just want to get the survey going. I want to get the whole process going, and I know it's going to take some time. It's going to take several meetings, lots of input, but I just wanted to get it rolling as quickly as possible.
I, okay. I think that's a good idea.
Commissioner Baker?
What's the process, and how long would it take to set up a committee? Because that's exactly what I was, where I was going with this. Why, how can we, what's the process, and how long would it take to set up the committee like Commissioner Troyer just mentioned?
City Manager?
I do know that other communities have mechanisms akin to a landlord advisory board that would take some time to research. I would imagine it would probably range from four to six weeks to reach out to peer communities, understand what their structures are, compare it to our own structures, determine how it would fit within the scope of our operations, and then determine how a committee could be comprised with representation that reflects a number of populations within the community and craft it to specific needs.
Okay, let's finish with Stephanie's presentation, and then we can talk about it as a commission.
Mount Pleasant just did one. You might want to look there. You can Google it.
Okay, great. Any other? Okay. No, we're dealing with you at this point. If you're done with your presentation, then we'll move on to the commission's questions.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Baker?
Can I make a motion, then, for the city administration to research and look into the feasibility of starting a landlord tenant advisory board?
Or do you want to wait till we have our?
Till we work?
We have our information and go and make it all part of that whole process?
It's supposed to be part of the process.
Because ultimately, it's like we're jumping a gun and doing something that may come out as definitely needed in the survey, and that's part of that survey question.
Well, and I understand, but as the city managers just stated, it would take anywhere from four to six weeks.
He could do that.
For that information to come up, so...
As a process going on right now, just to let us know that, what's out there. You know, I don't really think we need a motion for that to happen.
I don't know. I just want to make sure that it's getting researched.
Yeah.
That's all.
Is that something you could test up your communities?
Certainly at the commission's pleasure.
Yeah, I think the consensus is that we'd like to know what else is going on with, out there with landlord communication and stuff.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any more?
I could address Ms. King's comments.
Okay, sure.
And just a note, in regards to Ms. King's comments, we do take concerns very seriously, and we'll watch the comments that you made during the meeting through the recording and discuss that internally in follow-up.
Okay. Is it a personal issue type of thing? Okay. Item G, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Item one, under the City Manager's Report, would provide authorization of a rate stabilization agreement with Trident Risk Solutions for the city's property and liability coverage. As the commission is aware, every three years, the city utilizes a proposal process for determining which insurance package is the best for the city. In recent years, the city has utilized a consulting firm of Point Counseling Services to guide city administration through this process, which assisted with the bidding of the city's property and liability insurance in 2010 and '12 in a manner that ensures the policies meet all of the needs of the city. Point Counseling Services' historic fees for the service included specification development, information analysis, evaluation of current coverages and needs, evaluation of qualifying bidders, bid proposals, and other tasks for an estimated total of $11,600. The city's current insurance policy is due to expire June 30, 2019, so if the city were to proceed with the RFP process, the consultant contract should be initiated during the first part of January 2019. Based on the consultant cost and administrative time required to prepare an RFP, Deputy Manager Troyer reached out to the city's agent, Peterson McGregor and Associates for a proposal to extend the current policy with Trident Risk Solutions. Trident Risk Solutions officially offered the included rate lock agreement, which would allow steady and future planning options for insurance items moving forward. Notably, the rate lock agreement would average out the loss ratio over a four-year period, excluding the most recent year, so that no single year impacts the rates as negatively, and would agree to a maximum rate increase of 3% per annum. Therefore, in regards to the maximum rate increase, which isn't necessarily guaranteed to be 3% every year, but would be three or under, in regards to the increase, if the city were to receive the maximum annual increase, it would represent an increase of $17,290, roughly, in premiums at the third year if it were to be extended. Alternatively analyzed, if the 3% increase were issued for each of the extended years, the rate for 2021 would be equivalent to the rate from 2014. As noted above, the cost to hire an insurance consultant to release an RFP would cost approximately $11,600 with a considerable amount of administrative time across all departments to prepare the process and ensure that changes meet the needs of the city. Accordingly, I would recommend that the city commission authorize the city manager to execute the rate stabilization agreement with Trident Risk Solutions for the city's property and liability coverage. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gary?
So move the city manager's recommendation.
Support. It's been moved, supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Can I just make a note that our agent, Greg Burrows, from Peterson McGregor, made the trip tonight and is in the audience to answer any questions from the commission that they may have regarding the stabilization agreement.
Okay. Thank you for being here.
I'm sitting through this long meeting. Mayor Baspas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Motion, Gary. Thank you. Thanks.
Item two, under the City Manager's Report, would provide for the approval of a collective bargaining agreement with the fire captain's bargaining unit. As commissioners are aware, city administration recently reached a tentative agreement with the fire captain's bargaining unit on a successor agreement to the most recent applicable collective bargaining agreement, which expired on June 30. Included for review and consideration by the city commission is the negotiated successor agreement that could be entered into by the parties. Specific changes to the existing agreement include the creation of a 100-hour limitation on the accrual of compensatory time, as defined in Section 5.2 of the proposed agreement; a clarification of funeral leave to indicate that one of the allowed days off is not required to be the day of a service, as defined in Section 7.4; the inclusion of language pertaining to an already existing public employee health care benefit previously approved by the city commission, as defined in Section 8.5 of the agreement; language pertaining to members of the bargaining unit receiving equivalent food allowance, boot call, and other similar payment increases, should these be increased for members of the firefighters' bargaining unit; the creation of an acting chief appointment and pay structure in Section 9.22, and 2% wage increases annually to become effective on July 1, 2018 retroactively, and July 1, 2019, and 2020, with the increase anticipated for 2020 being equivalent to any wage increase received by members of the firefighters' bargaining unit, if at such time, an increase exceeds 2%. Each bargaining unit member would also receive a signing bonus of $500. In addition, the city and bargaining unit have successfully negotiated language pertaining to pension benefits, which states that the parties will work in good faith toward reducing the costs of established pension plans and negotiate changes relating to the same. It should be noted that this language is the same as the language included in the MOU entered into by the city and the firefighters' bargaining unit. It should also be noted the agreement has been modified to be made gender-neutral. And finally, it is important to note that upon the approval and execution of the agreement, the city will have no expired collective bargaining agreements with any of its seven bargaining units until June 30, 2019. The term of the successor agreement would run from July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2021, or for three fiscal years. As commissioners are aware, the city has maintained fiscal stability under difficult circumstances that are impacting many other municipalities throughout the state and circumstances unique to the city. Concurrently, the wage increases agreed upon, in my assessment, strike the correct balance between ensuring this stability continues into the future and attracting and retaining skilled employees whose efforts contribute to the advancement of the community. On behalf of the city administration, I would like to thank the members of the unit for their continued contributions to the city and for serving the community in an effective and professional manner. Accordingly, it would be my recommendation that the city commission authorize the city manager and city attorney to execute the negotiated successor collective bargaining agreement between the city and fire captain's bargaining unit, as presented, and to authorize corresponding budget amendments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Job well done. Commissioner Talantino?
Sure. Make a motion to authorize the city manager and city attorney to execute the negotiated successor collective bargaining agreement between the city of Sioux-St. Marie and the fire captain's bargaining unit, as presented, and to authorize corresponding budget amendments.
Support.
It's been moved, supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspas?
Yes. Motion, Gary. Thank you.
That concludes the city manager's report. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Okay, thank you. Item H is the status reports.
Thank you, Mayor. First item under status reports is an update regarding city, village, and township revenue sharing program compliance. As commissioners are likely aware, during the course of the last several years, the state of Michigan has made significant changes to the means through which statutory revenue sharing is distributed to local units of government. These programs have been modified to become the city, village, and township revenue sharing program. Importantly, the applicable portion of the statutory requirements for this program states local units are to produce a citizen's guide of its most recent local finances, including a recognition of its unfunded liabilities, a performance dashboard, a debt service report containing a detailed listing of debt service requirements, and a projected budget report, including at a minimum the current fiscal year and a projection for the immediately following fiscal year. The city has long embraced transparency and compliance with this program as an extension of these historic efforts. Importantly, the city has complied with the submission deadline of December 1 for this year's iteration of the program, ensuring the city will obtain $431,326 in revenue sharing for the state of Michigan's 2019 fiscal year. Of note, the city has complied with both current program and past programs since their introductions and modifications. Citizens are able to review these documents on the city's website or at the city clerk's office. Specifically, I would like to extend my appreciation to Deputy Manager Troyer, Finance Director Collins, and IT Director Raffaelli for their work in pulling together the information for this year's submission and ensuring program compliance. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Okay, thank you. Any other, that's it, eh? Any questions of that? City Manager? Okay. That concludes the status reports?
It does. Thank you, Mayor.
I remember I matters presented by the public. Pat, I don't know your name, but thank you very much for, it was rather a long meeting, but we're there. If you'd identify yourself, man, for the record.
My name is Peggy Starr, and I live on Sugar Island. On October 7, I was driving on Ord Street and hit a pothole, and my tire went flat. The spare tire- on Ord Street and hit a pothole. My tire went flat. The spare tire was put on, and I went to EUP Tire to have the tire fixed. I was told the tire was destroyed and could not be repaired. The car has 2,000, had 2,000 miles on it, so the tire was almost new. I bought a new tire for $171.29. I went to the city hall to ask for reimbursement. I was told I had to write a letter to the assistant city manager. I wrote a letter on October 12 explaining the situation. I did not hear anything. So on October 22, I sent another letter. I received a phone call on October 25 that I would be receiving response from the insurance company Trident. I did receive a response. It started out with what the situation was, and the conclusion was you are making a claim for damages to your vehicle that was incurred when a pothole was stuck, stuck on Ord Street. In order for a municipality to be found responsible for damages caused by alleged defects in the public way, the municipality must have received sufficient prior notice of the defect and failed to correct it in a reasonable amount of time. The city of Sioux St. Marie, Michigan denies any prior knowledge of this defect and therefore respectfully denied your claim. I have made the following assumptions from this letter. Before damage to a car can be reimbursed, I have to know the city of the pothole that is going to cause damage to my car. If I notify the city of the pothole ahead of time, I could get reimbursement for the damage. Residents and visitors using the city streets have the responsibility of hunting potholes that might cause damage and notify the city. I am a consumer. Anyone driving down Ashman and the Businessburg can observe many empty stores, very similar to Montgomery, Alabama. You need customers. Buy local is a popular saying these days, but in my opinion, you are not customer or business friendly. Fix your potholes and streets. Take down the meters. Welcome us from Sugar Island. Make us feel our concerns are legitimate. Amazon is your competitor. Its business model stresses that it is easy to shop and get the merchandise right at your own door, two days on Sugar Island. It is certainly easier, more cost-effective, and more pleasant than dodging potholes and paying for damage to a vehicle.
Thank you. Has the, do we have a committee that reviews that? Have we looked at that? City, Deputy, city manager? Because invariably, this insurance company rejects any, any of those items. And we've had people reject it before. And we, I think the commission has always felt that if the city was negligent, if it was our pothole. Now, there was a pretty good pothole on Ord. I remember, was it at the corner when you were turning? Was it a?
Right before you turned, that the corner was right before. I didn't see it.
Yeah, I mean, anything, and destroys a tire, I think we have at least to take a look at our committee that's involved. And did you have pictures? Did you have, you have an iPhone? Did you have pictures of the?
It was at night.
Was it at night? Oh, okay. Okay. City manager?
Certainly, administration can follow up, as guided by city commission. This may be an area in which a policy could be drafted to review these types of claims in a systematic manner.
Yeah, and, yeah, who knows? Hopefully, we don't get a rash of them, but, because they don't normally destroy, I mean, I've hit potholes, and it doesn't destroy your, your tire or your rim. And there's been some pretty good size ones. I call them in. I mean, if I hit one, and it's, you can always, you know, call the city or let the city website, let someone know, right, that we have a pothole in a particular area that needs to be patched. The problem we have in our area, because hot patch doesn't stay in the potholes very long if they're wet, and they pop in the wintertime, and it's a, it's a maintenance nightmare, but it continues to go on. But we have worked with, a lot of our city streets have been refurbished, and they've been, we've been rebuilt, totally rebuilt, and they don't move as much as they used to because of the new combined sewer overflow that we, we've been going through the last 22 years. So a lot of improvement has existed, but if you would bring your receipts and that stuff and give them to the?
I already have them.
Oh, you have them? Okay, and?
It's already gone through the entire process and was denied by the carrier.
Denied by the carrier, but would you look into that? I think we're?
We could follow up and come back with recommendations for the commission.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? City commission. Item number J, management by the city commission. Just like to thank, again, Parker Hardware and the Christmas parade, and certainly the visit by Santa Claus, but Parker Hardware, I think, is this the fifth year that they've been a major sponsor in the DDA and the volunteers that helped put that, organize and put that parade on. The lighting of the Christmas tree was tremendous. The city this year used our staff to decorate the tree, and it was beautiful. And it, we had a lot of children in the parade that were there, and it wasn't pouring on us. Good thing it wasn't Saturday. That was Friday night, because Saturday was, was downright nasty, like last year when we lit it and it was raining out. But it was, it's a, it's a very nice event, and certainly like to thank those people that were involved with floats and the people that had anything to do with making that happen, and certainly the, again, Parker Hardware for being a major sponsor in that. Okay. So, Commissioner Baker, anyone?
Just on the topic of the medical marijuana and the discussion that occurred, I'm, I'm slightly confused as far as the rest of the commission and how we're, you know, Commissioner Gary said you're not for it, you're not against it, you're kind of, you want the facts. And our city attorney stated what he thinks to be facts, although he did say he could be wrong. But then I make a motion to figure out for them to look, for the administration to look into that, to see if that is actual fact, or if he is wrong, and no support from the commission. So I'm just, we have our city attorney saying that he's pretty sure that there's no issue. And then I ask for us just to check on that, to make sure he is accurate, and I get no support. And I just hope before the next commission meeting, because I will be bringing it again before the commission, that we really look into, at least at the very, just letting Steve look into it to see if that is a factor, if allowing medical marijuana facilities will then trigger us to allow recreation. If they are separate and medical is set, and the laws are in place, and they're doing the licensing, and the state is taking control of it, we should have no issue as a city allowing it within city limits. And again, it doesn't have to be downtown. It can go to the planning commission and through the process for zoning and whatnot. But this is a $20 billion industry now, and it hasn't even taken off the ground. Within 10 years, it, it's going to continue to raise. It's not going to drop. So again, I feel, especially with the state of Michigan voting for it, the Chippewa County voting for it, we at least deserve, for the voters deserve, the voters deserve for us to allow Mr. Cannello to look in to see if he is actually correct.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Miller?
As I stated at the last meeting, you keep talking about the votes for and against. That was for recreational marijuana. That was not whether you wanted marijuana in, commercial marijuana inside your city. So it's not, you're not using the exact facts. And you made two motions tonight that couldn't even get a second. So I think you got your answer, Commissioner.
Commissioner Torrey?
Yeah, well, and, you know, I'll just, I'll respond to you also, because I, I am a proponent of medicinal marijuana. My brother-in-law passed away six years ago, and it saved his life. However, I don't think that we should be spending city resources, spending time trying to research something that is going to be argued over and litigated over for a long, long time. Why don't we just wait and see what the state says, why don't we just wait and see what the state says about recreation so that we guarantee there's no loophole into the medicinal marijuana? We're talking about one more year. And I know that there are a lot of caregivers in the area, because this is where my brother-in-law got his marijuana from. And there are a lot of availability for people to continue getting care. I don't know why James is driving five hours. I'm planning on reaching out to him after the meeting so that we can sit down and have a discussion. But I really feel like we need to make sure that we're protecting the city from, from loopholes and backdoor. We just need to kind of wait and be patient and see what the state comes back with. On top of that, I also wanted, and I see that Justin left tonight, I just wanted to give a kudos to Justin and Lindsay on Small Business Saturday. I feel like that program continues to grow, of course, because of American Express, because they're the ones that do all of the propaganda for it. But I've heard from several business owners who said that it was their best Small Business Saturday of all, and so I appreciate everybody that do come downtown. I'm really sorry about your tire. Hopefully, we can take a look at that. But I, I think that Small Business Saturday is, is a program that is really benefiting all of the small businesses in the area, not just downtown, but also uptown. Thank you.
Okay, great. Commissioner Gary?
I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting?
Support.
Hold and favor. See if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Both same side? Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you.